Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is elected on a group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the-
The New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the publisher agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Trenton Times on January 6th, 2023, and re-advertised on August 10th and October 11th, 2023. It was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board deserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 168 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this in-person meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comments at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall be asked to approach a podium and make comments. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff. Only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Betsy Baglio?
Here.
Beth Barron?
Here.
Jean Durbin?
Sir, absent.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Talkponder?
Present.
Rob Christopher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I get a motion for adoption of the minutes for September 26, 2023? Mara, second. Rob?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talkponder?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. So, welcome, everyone. I see that we have a lot of people here tonight. Thank you. And we have principals, I think, from every school. So, I will not make you sit there and listen more to me. We'll try to move this along. So, because we do have a long meeting tonight. But, right now, I'm going to turn my report over to, for long-term planning update, to co-chair Brian McDonald.
Sure. This would normally take place later in the meeting, but because of the high level of interest, we thought we'd put it at the start of the meeting in case it informs public comment. The Long-Term Planning Committee met three times last week: a public meeting via Zoom on Wednesday, October 11th, a committee meeting on Thursday, October 12th in closed session, and a public meeting in person at Princeton Middle School on Saturday, October 14th. The long-term planning effort combines academic planning, facilities planning, and financial planning. Co-chairs of the Operations, Student Achievement, and Policy Committees serve on the long-term planning committee. In the open public meetings, a summary of work performed over the past six months was presented, as well as a recap of planning since 2018. Since the spring, the focus has been on the evaluation of four options. One, maintain the status quo and rezone and redistrict as needed. Two, construct a 5-6 school, expand CP to four sections, the minimum needed to continue the DLI program, and redistrict as needed. Three, move to a sister-school model and redistrict as needed. And four, expand CP and another elementary school to four sections, or expand CP to five sections and redistrict as needed. The status quo was ruled out because even after extensive redistricting, the elementary schools would be projected to be at 100% capacity in five years. After establishing high-level considerations and parameters, a rubric was created, and capital and operating costs of the various options were estimated. Based on all of this information, the planner, architect, administration, and committee believed that the best option was to expand CP Community Park to five sections. The administration finds that as a best practice, a dual-track at CP with at least two classes of DLI and two classes of traditional at every grade level, as well as two pre-K classes, is needed. The anticipated enrollment to support this programming is approximately 530 students. The 5-6 school was ruled out for three reasons. A, it had the highest capital cost by a factor of two, with an estimated cost of more than $100 million versus an estimate of $53 million to expand the middle school and CP. B, it had the highest increase in operating costs, approximately $250,000 a year, higher than the recommended option. And C, the architects described the Valley Road Site as "undersized" for a 5-6 school. The sister-school model was ruled out because it created an extra transition without imparting a distinct educational benefit to the students. It was not favored by parents, teachers, or staff members, and it required construction at all four schools at a greater capital expense than the recommended option. After the two community meetings, there was significant concern expressed by some parents that CP would be too large, and that either the 5-6 school or expansion at another elementary school should receive more consideration. The committee and administration continue to strongly believe that a 5-6 school on the Valley Road Site is not a viable option for the reasons stated earlier. However, in response to feedback received and anticipating updated demographic projections, we will continue to work on the elementary school planning, and the Board will use this information to decide whether it is necessary to expand CP to five sections or to review other options. Additionally, we will ask the administration to meet with administrators from the municipality to discuss parking and traffic-related concerns that were surfaced. The work to design additional teaching and learning and course spaces at the middle school will continue. The committee meets at 9:00 AM this Friday, October 20th in closed session, and then again on November 16th at 4:30 PM. It is possible that additional community meetings will be scheduled. As part of the consent agenda tonight, authorization is being sought to approve a contract with FVHD Architects to continue the planning process. That's my report.
Brian, can I add just one thing? If a member of the public would like to see or watch the meetings that happened last week, particularly Wednesday night, where the architect explained the matrix of the different options, it's available on the district website under Board, Future Planning at the top of the page.
Yes, Board, Future Planning. That gets you to a page, and the very first two links on that page. Watch this magic.
All right. No, come on. We don't- You're trying to scare me. It's not Halloween yet.
We're going to replay the whole meeting right now.
Please don't. Thanks, Matt. I think.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian, and Beth, for leading that committee. I don't know if anyone else has any comments before?
I just had a question, just a clarification. If we think about the capacity at elementary schools in terms of classrooms of study, I'm not talking about special-area class, I mean, I'm thinking about sort of grade-level classrooms. So, you know, we have different, right now, sort of a range of class sizes, right? But if we think about it in terms of classrooms, to have two dual-language classrooms and two traditional classrooms, if I'm doing the math correctly, plus two preschool classrooms, that would be 26 classrooms needed at CP. And currently, our elementary schools have 20 classrooms, is that right? If it's two preschool classrooms plus three at every grade level? Or approximately?
Plus there's AI.
Right. Okay. So, when we think about the expansion needed, if it were a four-classroom model, we're talking about six additional classrooms. And a five-classroom model would be more like 10 to 12. Okay. It's, I think it's helpful to think in terms of classrooms as well, because we know class size will vary. And so, I think thinking about our capacity in that way is helpful to me, at least. Thank you. Thanks for your work on it.
Michelle?
I'm actually grateful that we have another month to think about this and talk about this. One of the things that I raised at our last long-term facilities planning meeting was my concern about the congestion and density in the Community Park neighborhood, which is where I live. And if you ever try to move around in the morning, you'll find yourself in gridlock. Also, since the last time we talked about a 5-6 school, the community has actually gotten even more dense, and now we have the emergency services facility right in the middle of our community. So, not only do we need to be concerned about traffic, we also need to be concerned about the safety and security of the community at large, and whether or not emergency vehicles from the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the ambulance and rescue squad are able to get out and around at rush hour and at other times of the day, and also just around safety issues around the neighborhood and density. So, I'm glad we have a chance to talk about this. This is a conversation that the town really needs to be engaged in, and, because, you know, we don't operate in a vacuum. So, I'm grateful for the additional time and hope we can address some of those issues.
Susan?
I just also know that there's some additional work in terms of the demographics that were used for this. So, if either, you know, Brian or Matt could speak to how we will all be informed about an updated demographic study, because I know each year, you know, they can refine it and make it get a little closer to where we actually think we're going to wind up.
Yeah, we're, and me specifically, constantly updating our actual enrollments and comparing them to the forecasts. We're also looking closely at past developments. I've gotten a lot of work done so far, comparing, you know, how many children came from each development, you know, the five or six big ones that we all know in the community. So, that really helps us to, you know, more accurately predict where we think we'll be.
Right. And the reason for doing it now is because our enrollment is certified as of October 15th. Is that correct? Right? That's every school district in New Jersey?
It's October 15th and finalized about six weeks later.
Okay. But we have preliminary numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I would also note that, in addition to the five facilities in Princeton that we will look at very closely, that's Witherspoon 1 and 2, those two developments around Heinz Plaza, Copperwood, Avalon on Witherspoon Street, and the Murick-Stanworth Development. We think that the actuals for Princeton will be very helpful, as there are different methodologies for calculating. And so, we may have a Princeton-specific factor, if you will. The other two things that have changed in the last year are that we now know with great specificity what the new developments are going to be: the number of bedrooms, the number of affordable units, the split of the bedrooms, the townhome units. And the second is that there are four more developments since last year that have already or are coming before the planning board. There is a meeting going on contemporaneously with this meeting, talking about the tenant Roberts Whitley campus at the seminary and the potential development there. And so, we'll be able to include a lot more information in this cycle than was available even a year ago.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone? Oh, Mara, sorry.
I was forgetting me. Clarifying question. The 5-6 school, from my understanding, the capital costs were two times the other, was that just, I thought it was more like five times the cost of just the CP addition, but it's about two times the cost of the CP addition for the capital cost? And then the operating expenses would run about an extra $250 a year versus the other model that you're, that we're proposing for the CP addition?
So, the additional capital costs of the, so the recommended model was expand the middle school to accommodate 100 to 200 more students and make sure that some of the spaces were updated. It also is to expand core spaces: a supplemental gym space, an expanded cafeteria, and a multipurpose space?
Correct.
Thank you, Professor. And, and so, all of those costs are one chunk, and then the expansion at CP is the, is the other chunk. And the number we have is for the expansion to five sections from the current, a little bit more than three. And the expansion of common spaces at, expansion or construction of new common spaces at CP. So, together, the middle school and the CP were, are estimated by our professionals at $53,375,000. And the estimate for the middle school, the new 5-6 school, plus work that would still need to be done at CP in order to have four sections, is estimated at somewhere between $103 and $110 million on a site that the architects believe is undersized for a 5-6 school. And we'd have to relocate our administration and our school buses.
And, you know, as we're looking at the parking and the density, a 5-6 school at that corner would create its own traffic issues. So, that I assume is something that we'll look at as, you know, the same, that would have some of the same issues that Michelle just brought up, because you'd have a-
Well, I think it would be general.
But in general, it sounds like a very unaffordable option, at a capital cost two times of, and operating expenses.
And have the same issues in terms of traffic.
But it would be more, right? Because you would have a 5-6 school there, and we still, if we want to continue with the DLI dual-track, would still need to add classrooms, right?
Yeah. So, I don't think it, so, I think the committee felt it didn't solve that issue in terms of the traffic.
And it would actually include more traffic, because the 5-6 would have all the busing, and the DLI school at CP should hopefully just be a walkable school, so it shouldn't have that much increased busing. So, a 5-6 school would actually significantly increase traffic, whereas hopefully, a CP school would be walkable and would not.
Right. So, the, from the perspective of the planners and the architects, there is not a viable option that does not include expanding CP to at least four sections. What they have said that they will do is look again at the other three elementary schools, each of which had challenges the last time they looked, and, and inform us of the viability of adding on a fourth section to one of those three schools and the combined cost of the projects.
Right. But then you would have an additional cost. You would still have to build at CP, and you would then also have to build at another school. So, it's difficult to imagine that those two constructions would be more affordable than one construction.
We'll, we'll wait to get that information.
Yep.
But it could address potentially, you know, how big a school we want to have within our district.
All right. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you, Brian. And we're moving on now to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Good evening, everyone. First thing on the superintendent's report was we have Tired Dog, Tiger, that has earned his certification as a, not a therapy dog, a-
A service dog.
A service therapy dog. So, I think we have some cute pictures of Tiger. No? All right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that Tiger is not here this evening. This is not Tiger, unfortunately. This is Charlie. And his mom has been very remiss in him attending classes, but they do look alike, it's just that he has not yet earned that certification.
Do you want to have Sarah Moore come up? So, Sarah is our Supervisor of Elementary Education, and she's Tiger's mom. And so, she led him through the process. So, Sarah, would you want to come up to the podium and maybe share our, maybe why Tiger's not here tonight, and all the questions we get from kids all the time about when Tiger's going to be entering our building?
Sure. Thank you so much for having me. It's so nice to see everyone. Tiger was really excited to come tonight and was getting groomed yesterday, so that he looked his best to impress, and moved his neck and got a little cut. So, just to be proactive, we took him to the vet. We were there from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM last night. He had to get three little stitches, but he is okay and fine and healing at home. But he looks a little funky right now and is on some pain meds, so he's going to rest. But he is good to come into schools now. Elementary families can expect to receive a Google survey in the next few weeks, just asking for basic information about child allergens. He is hypoallergenic, if there is a fear of dogs, just so that we have a global picture of any classrooms that might need to be more caution around. We might need to go to a common space for visiting with Tiger in those instances. So, elementary parents can expect a Google survey in the next few weeks, and then he'll begin coming in to visit with students, going in for some literacy time for reading with students, some SEL time during our morning meetings. So, we're really excited for him to come in. He looks just like Charlie. So, if you have met Charlie, they-
Little less poofy.
Yeah. A little less poofy and a little more shy.
And I believe he was getting paid with snosages, so you guys have to kind of make sure he's getting that paycheck.
Yeah. That's right.
I will say, he did a little informal visit at CP over the summer for summer camp, and he loved the students and was so great with them. The kids were so excited. So, we're excited to bring him in. He will go visit the middle schoolers. Our fifth graders from last year have requested that, that is on the first docket of visits, is to visit the sixth graders this year. So, he'll make his way across all the buildings. We'll visit the high school as well, so he'll be shared around.
That's great.
Thank you. Please give him our best wishes for speedy recovery. All right.
And I know everyone has been long awaiting our district report on testing, so we have Dr. Two. I will turn the microphone over to you and your team.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm going to stay seated. I'm going to ask the supervisors to come on up and maybe share the podium, if that's okay, and Nikki. So, please come on up, and I'll introduce everyone. Thank you. So, this testing presentation, good evening, everyone. It's great to share these results with you, is our annual sort of status of where we are with our AP test results, our SAT test results, ACT, our DLM, which is our Alternative Assessment for students who are unable to participate in our NJSLA testing, as well as NJSLA ELA, math, and science scores. So, I'm just going to kind of go from left to right and introduce the folks that are with us tonight, who are helping me present our district data. As a side note, those at home and those in the audience, this will be posted on our website tomorrow, so that you can review at your leisure. I think we're at 73 slides. We're going to kind of go through it pretty quickly tonight, because we know we have a lot of other agenda items, but I just want to let you know that this will be posted, so that you can look at it through your leisure. So, up first is our Supervisor of Counseling and Wellness, John McMichael. So, he's going to come and talk in a minute about AP, SAT, and ACT scores. Then we have Sarah Moore, our Supervisor of Elementary Education. Nikki Crispelli, who's our Director of Special Services. Tiffany Brennan, our new Supervisor of Math and Business Education. And then, in spirit with us tonight, and I'm going to be taking on the role, is our Humanity Supervisor, Keisha Smith-Carrington, and our Science Supervisor, Dr. Joy Barnes-Johnson. So, I will be presenting their portions tonight. All right. So, let's get started. Okay. So, John, you're on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John McMichael. And 73 slides, all right. So, we'll move quickly. We'll start off with AP, the Advanced Placement Program. We here at Princeton have 33 different course offerings and exams, and we do give our students who are enrolled at Princeton High School the benefit of taking any exam they would-
Course offered, Chinese exam?
I don't need to, maybe? Am I sound so weird? We do allow our students, if they would like to take an AP exam for a course that we do not offer, we hear a lot of the time, self-study. We do allow that. So, so the list, there are actually 39 total AP courses and exams, so we're really close. Okay, you can see the score summary there, and if you just, I, my eye kind of goes to that middle row. Forty-three percent of our students, almost half of our students who take AP exams, get a five. It's the highest score possible, which is super impressive. And as you can see there, you know, the, the curve, I don't know, Miss Brendan would need to help me out with the math there, which is positive or negative on that curve, but I like that it's at the high end, right? So, one is the lowest, five is the highest, for those of you that this is new for. And I just wrote this down, just as a side note. We had 753 students. The College Board says 2,062, they call them enrollments. So, basically, almost every student took close to three, just below three exams. Just, I thought that was an interesting fact to throw in. So, the next slide is recognition that the College Board provides for our students that do exceptionally well. Really, I'll just tell you the first one. So, AP scholar on the left, that means a student received a three or higher on three or more exams. So, just, that's the lowest recognition up there. So, they only get better as they go to the right. And the AP International Diploma is super long and involved. It's amazing to even be on that list. So, to have one student is phenomenal. If you Google it and read the criteria, you'd be blown away. The five-year score summary. So, what I, and for those who don't know, I've started at Princeton at the end of August, so this is all, this world is new to me. What I, what really jumped out to me is, if you look, it's kind of like we're, we're getting back to normal after the pandemic, right? The numbers really are bounced back since about 2020. So, I thought that's really great to see that, you know, we're getting back to where we need to be, and imagine that. Everybody's back in school, and we're doing better. That's crazy, right? Okay. So, the demographics, you know, this is just a snapshot for last year. But again, returning to traditional Princeton norms, I used last year's report, being new to Princeton, I used last year's as a model, updated the numbers for this year, and they are very similar.
Can I just interrupt for one second, John? So, just so the community knows and the Board knows, if there's a group that's under 10 altogether, it is suppressed. So, there is some information tonight in our AP scores, our SAT scores, our ACT scores, our DLM, et cetera, that if we don't have a group of 10, or, then they are suppressed, and we cannot show that to the public. I just want to make sure that that's clear, in case you see, because there might be certain racial or ethnic groups, or gender, or whatever it may be, that you will not see tonight. It's not because we excluded it, it's because we cannot show it. Go ahead, John. Sorry.
No, please. Thank you for clarifying that. So, you know, as great as things are, and this is, again, only being here for a little while, makes me feel like I'm, I'm in the right place and where I belong, because I personally believe that, you know, as good as I might be as an individual, as a person, I can always grow and get better. I think the same is true for this program. So, we do have goals in front of us that we strive for every day and work together as a team at the high school. So, let's jump over to the SAT. Again, if you see the score trend, look back a few years and see where we're at now, you'll see again that, that return to what I'd like to call the before times. And, you know, it's interesting, because one of the outcomes of the pandemic is that it is now over 2,000-four-year colleges and universities have moved to a test optional or test-free policy. So, it's kind of interesting to see how that's going to play out. Is it going to continue, and what the impact will be on these scores? So, it's kind of an interesting time to be looking at SAT scores. Next slide is averages, and where Princeton High School stacks up in comparison to the state and national averages. So, as you can see there, super impressive, you know, our, our kids do exceptionally well.
And something I do want to note, if people see that maybe we dipped a little bit from last year, I think we went down on an average of 19 points. For New Jersey, that they, we dipped 59 points across the state for New Jersey, and at the national level, 32 points. So, everyone is sort of trending down, but what the good news is, is we're not trending down as deeply or statistically significantly as our state and nation. So, that is a trend, and that, I think, comes into test optional, COVID. If you go on the College Board's website, they're even saying that they're seeing these trends in ACT and SAT, and that there are too many variables at this point to determine why.
Great. Thank you. Next slide just covers how the scores broke down last year by gender. That was the only breakdown for that, so I just threw in the, the updated numbers. And then the ACT. So, for anybody that's kind of like, yeah, I've heard of that one, what's the deal with that one? Much more popular, their, their headquarters is in Iowa. I think we all know where the College Board and ETS, they're not too far from us, right? So, this is a test that's much more popular in the Midwest, the central part of the country. When you get to the coast, the SAT is way more popular, as the numbers on the previous slide shows you, but we do have students take it. So, 170 last year, again, an improvement over, over last year, and our score's kind of getting back to where they were, but Dr. Two made a great point about, you know, other factors at play here, including the pandemic. And then, again, the only breakdown that was in the presentation last year is the breakdown by gender. So, there are the 23 numbers based on gender for the ACT.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Mickey, who's going to talk about our DLM scores, Dynamic Learning Maps.
Thank you. So as Dr. Two had mentioned before, um, the dynamic learning map is part of the testing requirement that we have for all students. So for our students who are, as it says up here, have more significant cognitive issues and, you know, accessing learning in school, um, we provide the dynamic learning map. So what this assessment does is it drills into the common core standards and it creates essential, essential elements. And the assessment that tests the kids on these essential, essential elements. Um, so if you can go to the next slide. With the DLM, because we're talking about such a small group of students, it's really hard to pull kind of group trends from it. Um, this is a test that's also given for grades three up through eight in language arts and math. But for high school, only grade 11. So some of the students who take the DLM stay in school until they're 21. So it's actually their third year in high school. For science, it's just in fifth grade, eighth grade and 11th grade. Um, so what we do, because we can't really make um, global statements from the results, because there are so few students, we do analysis at different levels. So if you can go, um, we look at where the students are. So these are the achievement levels from emerging to advanced. And basically here's our data, but this doesn't tell us much. As administrators, it, you know, it doesn't say anything really to teachers. So you can see where our students who took the test in third grade through eighth grade and 11th grade, where we kind of fell, but it doesn't tell you anything about our instruction. So what we need to do is sit down and go through an analysis. So I do an analysis with all the supervisors. We take all the data. We look at trends of the groups in the middle school and the elementary school. At the high school, we only had one student. So you can see how small the, the sizes are. If you can go to the next slide. So what we did as an administrative team, we looked at those trends. We looked at areas of strength at the elementary level. So things like determining critical elements of text, understanding number structures, things like that at the uh, elementary level. Those were areas that need to be developed. Areas of growth, writing to communicate ideas and thoughts. Um, we are seeing some concern when we did some deeper digging into science, so life sciences and physical properties. Um, at the middle school level, um, things like determining critical elements from texts, again, use of writing to communicate, where areas of strength, areas that they're looking at are understanding number structures, construct, um, construct, understanding of text. That doesn't tell us a whole lot either as far as individual students, right? So what our supervisors do is they sit down with their teachers. So you know, you can have um, teachers of the students of those, those um, in the classes, like our autism class and our multiple disability class and our um, and sometimes our uh, learning and language disability class. And we sit down and we look at comparisons of students from year to year. And that's how we really see the trends. And um, sitting in some of this data analysis, this, in the past couple of weeks, we can see how teachers can tell where they added essential elements into individual student goals related to testing from the DLM in the past, they're seeing a positive trend in their student scores this year. So that's how we use this assessment, how we use essential elements to make sure that we are addressing student needs based on our day-to-day classroom data, but also from standardized data. So I hope that helps explain the whole DLM process a little bit. It's a little complicated. Um, so as I said, you know, we use the um, data to develop individual goals and targets based on the essential elements. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm, as I said, I'm going to be stepping in for Dr. Barnes Johnson. I, I do not have her presence and personality, but I will try my best and Sarah Moore is going to help me with the elementary scores. Um, so similarly to sort of DLM, it is not tested at every grade level as ELA and math are. So we test in fifth grade, eighth grade and 11th grade for science. Um, we'll see that there. Um, we really are looking at um, application and synthesis. These are higher level skills. A lot of times there's charts, there's graphs, there's a lot of deeper thinking. This is not just like a bubble test, that these are really asking higher level, critical real-world problem skills. And so these are the scores for this year. Um, a couple of things I want to highlight across the three grades. One is only a quarter of our juniors took this assessment. Um, I understand why. It's during AP testing time. There's a lot of other things our juniors want to be doing. And I'm looking at our student council reps here. Um, you know, um, we have one yes and one no. Um, um, and so how can we get our students to take this assessment? Because what we want to see is this is really our barometer, right? These are our standards for our state and we want to know how our students are doing. So you can see, we're really high achieving in our um, Advanced Placement Program, really high achieving in ACT and SAT. This really helps our district though, understand how are we reaching those state level standards and achieving past those state level standards. So we really want our students to take this assessment because it gives us programming information. It tells us what we need to do. Um, what we're seeing is, is just across the state in general, it's really hard to get those elementary science minutes in. Um, so you know, how can we leverage our elementary STEAM program and tie it more to standards across the line? Um, we really need our juniors to kind of, because we have the most science at the high school level, right, to take it so that we can see how we're doing. The good news is, is this is really depressing at the state. You can see how much lower we are in the minimal level than the state comparison. So we have about 55% meeting or exceeding expectations compared to the state's 27%. 53% in eighth grade compared to the state's 18% and 53% compared to the state's 25%. Um, so our scores are better in ELA and math in general. Um, but this is something working with, you know, Dr. Barnes Johnson and Sarah Moore, you know, how we can continue to infuse that work. And one of the trends we're seeing with our ELA scores is giving students more exposure to reading and writing in the technical areas, which means social studies and science. And as a social studies educator, I'm like, yes, social studies is in everything, science is in everything. So how can we kind of bring these interdisciplinary connections together and bring real-world problems to life? So um, by code, we also have to report out, if you have more than one school and a rebuilding level, we have to report out the individual scores. So Ms. Moore is just going to quickly, quickly go through our four elementary school science scores.
Hi. So we have Riverside up first. Again, positive trends, looking at the proficient lens of 49% to the rest of the district's 34%. Um, close in the advanced, 16% here, 19% district. Um, and then it skews the same as our whole district lens of 4% minimal, which is great, um, and 31% limited. We have Johnson Park up next, 17% advanced, 33% proficient, 24% limited and 25% minimal. Little Brook, we have 25% advanced, 35% proficient, 28% limited and 13% minimal. And Community Park, we have 15% advanced, 35% proficient, 36% limited and 14% minimal.
Okay. The other thing that we have to report out with NJSLA is our demographics. So um, I think this is, you can pretty much see, it might be a little bit small percentage-wise, but once again, this will be on the website tomorrow. So this is our distribution by achievement level, all grades for subgroups of, of race and ethnicity. And you can see that we have persistent opportunity gaps for our black students and our Hispanic students. Um, this is across all the assessments that we have. And so, you know, it's sort of, it's like, what do they say? Insanity is the definition of doing the same thing over and over again. What are we, what are we doing differently? How can we continue to have these programs and persist? So one of the creative things that we're doing, and I think when we do our school goals, Mr. Burr is going to highlight this, um, with the work of him, Ms. Latimer and Ms., uh, Dr. Barnes Johnson, doing this ESTEAM program, working with um, seventh grade students who are really interested in science and our sixth grade students who didn't meet expectations on the NJSLA, doing a Science Saturday Academy that brings in other uh, disciplines as well, and really trying to reach kids and develop that passion and build up skills. Um, so you know, this is ways that we can kind of reach kids in a new way that puts them with a peer mentor at, well, peer, they're high school students, so a cool older mentor um, and really helps work them and support them. The other thing that Dr. Barnes Johnson is really working on is building literacy and math standards into our science curriculum to strengthen up those skills, because so often when you get to higher levels of science, a lot of it is math-focused. A lot of it is literacy and tier-three vocabulary. Um, so how can we work to support these opportunity or to close these opportunity gaps? Here it is by gender. So pretty similar, our, our males did a little less, uh, had a little bit more less proficient than our females. And then here it is by programming. So to the left, you have free and reduced lunch. They, they do FR. Section 504 students, ELL, which has changed at the state code level to multilingual learners. You'll hear us use that phrase instead or that category instead. Our special education learners and our general education learners. Um, so what we're really trying to do is at the high school level, we added a course called La Horticultura. And I probably butchered that. I took German, not Spanish. Um, at the high school level for our multilingual learners and DLI students. So it's science in Spanish. So really helping develop the talent of our students and language and literacy in their heritage language as well. Um, so that is a, a tried and innovative way to close these gaps. And we have our food literacy program that we're really trying to reach out to kids and get kids interested in science in a different way. And then our continued support of students with IEPs and 504s. So areas of strength and areas for growth, we are consistent above the state level. I think the state level needs to be higher, but we are consistent above it. And we really do have a very STEM-focused school district. We are very much proud of the programming that we offer. We have our garden education, our STEAM at the elementary levels. We have PALS and STEM-based clubs, our research program, our new ESTEAM program at the middle school. And then what we really want to look at then is how are we reducing kids in that level one and level two? How do we kind of build up their skills so that they're transitioning to the right side of the bell curve? And then really looking at that data mining as a team and saying, you know, what can we do to improve those literacy and math scores in science? And so next step is that STEM literacy. Once again, going, being back in school makes a difference, because when we had shortened days or interrupted learning, science and social studies get cut out. So how do we make sure we have those daily opportunities? And then um, once Dr. John's, Bart Barnes Johnson is back, uh, we want to do an internal program review uh, come January and working with the team of educators from across the district um, to support that work. Okay, so now we're going to shift over to NJSLA and language arts. Um, so once again, this is in grades, uh, so we have more grades here. It's grades three through nine. And it's about application analysis. It's reading standards and writing standards. A lot of times parents email me and ask me, well, can you tell me what the writing prompts were or what kind of questions? Unfortunately, we don't see them. We are not allowed to see them. We can see sample questions online and we get reports, but what it says is, question one, this many kids got it right. We don't know what the question is. We maybe know like the subtopic and the standard. That's about it. So when we do a close data dive, what I can tell you, as I said earlier, is that we need better support in reading and writing in the technical subjects, AKA social studies and science. Literature, we're very much strong in. So here we are across the district in grades three through nine. So as you can see, um, going down the columns, we have very low numbers in level one. That's amazing. Look at seventh grade, 1%. That's fantastic. Um, and then you see that there's a trend of going up higher, right here in levels four and five, or I'm sorry, in levels four and five. We'll get to a, a more condensed graphic in a minute. That's much clearer for people to view. So here are our scores compared to last year. So now we have a new baseline. We have a new data point after the pandemic, because the test was different before the pandemic. Our kids weren't testing. And so now you can kind of see where we are. It's really important though, that we're not comparing apples to oranges. Let's follow cohorts. So if you follow a cohort, you're going catty corner. So right, this fourth grade, this was them last year, right? So third graders, they were, they got a 67%. Now this year, they're at 74% meeting or exceeding expectations. That's great. 76 to 73, 76 to 70. I will point out, we had um, some personnel gaps in sixth grade last year and leaves unfortunately, and I'm trying hard to find those gaps, as well as a transition to middle school. 74 to 79%, 82 to 86, 74 to 74. One of the things I want to point out is none of these are hugely, and I'm looking at the AP stats, former AP stats teacher in the room, Tiffany, are hugely statistically significant. However, one of the things that we notice is that grade seven tends to be an easier assessment for our students across the state, and they tend to have higher scores in grade seven than in grade eight. Um, and then what we want to kind of explore is even though these are two different groups of kids, you know, why might our third graders have not done as well this year compared to last year? You know, did they have COVID in kindergarten, right? Like when did this sort of, you know, track back and kind of say, is it computer literacy? Maybe this is the first time they're taking a standardized assessment and didn't know all the drag and drops and the pictures and the videos, right? We don't want to teach to the test. We want to teach kids how to utilize the test and the platforms that they can be successful and teach the standards that they have to, to go there. Uh, one other thing I want to point out, last year we had a column here that had district factor group scores. So we're considered an I in the state of New Jersey based on our demographics. Unfortunately, the state has not released that information yet. When it does, I will be able to update the PowerPoint and share that information with our community. But as of now, we do not have that data. Okay, Sarah, you're back up.
I'm back up. Um, so when we look at trends across English Language Arts, like Dr. Two mentioned, the good news is that we're really strong in English Language Arts here. So when we look down the not meeting expectation column, we see really low percentiles, 2%, 4%, 3%, et cetera. Um, and we look at the meeting and exceeding, that's where we see more of the growth of students happening. And that's where we see our student population really clustering. Um, so that's very positive. So this is Johnson Park. Um, you have third, fourth and fifth grade captured and then all grades comparative. We have Riverside. We see a similar trend, 0%, 4%, 2%, which is beautiful. Um, and then those higher clusters of students in the meeting and exceeding expectation range. Little Brook follows suit with low numbers in that not meeting and the higher clusters in our meeting and exceeding. Something that we really want to focus on as a school district, and I'll get to it in our follow-up slides, is how to really support some of those students in the approaching expectation in that bubble range where they're almost meeting. Um, we want to provide some more things like additional high-impact tutoring for those students and really making sure that we catch them for academic support so that we can help get them onto the meeting expectation category. Community Park School follows the same model, lower numbers in the not meeting, higher clusters in the meeting and exceeding expectation, which is great that we see it across all four buildings.
Okay. And then I'm going to take over for Ms. Smith Carrington now, but I guess she was going to do these slides. So um, what she did with the breakdown of the racial ethnicity groups, so the Asian and multiracial demographic groups were our highest total meeting and succeed, exceeding expectations with both groups equalling 83%, um, which is, which is wonderful. Uh, the white demographic was the next highest at 78%. And typical of the district's trends, our black and Hispanic students were at 47% and 46% um, estimated respectively. Um, so that's like double, you know, so what are we doing? Um, it goes, it goes back to the, those shifts. Um, gender, uh, the percentage of female students meeting and exceeding was six percentage points higher than males. This is a typical pattern for both the district and the state when we look across state data. And finally, through programs, their general education students and students with 504s are the highest programmatic groups in that order at 83% and 77% respectfully. And then our smallest percentages were our students with disabilities, our multilanguage learners and our um, low SES students. Okay. So areas of strength, you want to go back, Sarah, because this is mainly K5?
Sure. So some strengths, we have consistent performance above the state averages in all categories of meeting and exceeding expectations. We have strong curricular infrastructure and support for students and educators. So some of these supports look like instructional coaching cycles, which kicked off this week. So each building sent a grade-level representative teacher into a coaching cycle where they work directly with the coaches and myself on how to strengthen their practice and support learners and make sure that everyone is at the same place and pacing guides and that we're meeting those curricular standards for end-of-the-year mastery. We're looking at the implementation of the Institute for Multisensory Orton-Gillingham Training for all K-1 staff. So over the summer and through this fall, we trained all kindergarten and first grade teachers. The MZOG training is a 30-hour, very rigorous training for educators. It focuses on the National Center for Reading's Big Five. So we look at phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocab and comprehension, and how to infuse them into daily best practice. We are rolling out that daily structured literacy block this year in all K-1 classes. So if you have a kindergarten or first grade student, your child teacher has probably talked this over with you. What does this look like in application? Really exciting things for students. In kindergarten, they take a letter a week, but already they are reading and spelling consonant vowel consonant pattern words. In a previous program, that wouldn't happen until December or January. So we're really able to see trends early in a developmentally appropriate way, see how students are progressing on with early literacy skills. We've also brought in something called Hegarty this year for all of our kindergarten and first grade students, which helps build up that phonological profile for reading. A strong phonological profile is a better indicator of later reading success than anything like IQ or other metrics. So we're really working on building those foundational skills with our kindergarten and first grade students. We are offering pilots of the iReady ELA diagnostic this year, just to provide our teachers with additional metrics around how children are reading and what reading behaviors look like. So there is more data than ever on what our students look like as readers and how they interpret text. We're seeing trends here which are pretty consistent with other pieces, like Dr. Two mentioned, that cross-curricular connection. Um, something that we noticed from the pilot data already is that we really want to beef up how we're looking at vocabulary acquisition in things like science and social studies texts to support learners. We are also implementing our DRA3 as an updated benchmark. We previously had the DRA2. The new version is the DRA3. So we implemented that this year. Um, with that implementation, we have an elementary report card evening on Thursday evening on Zoom. So shameless plug to please attend. Uh, 6:30, 6:30. Yes, and it's on Zoom and we will record and post on the website if you're unable to attend. Something that elementary parents will see this year is a reading level for your child and then a band where you could expect that child to be by the end of the year. So again, another really helpful piece in partnering with parents and making sure that they're aware of exactly where your child is operating. And then we've also updated our dyslexia screener tool. We piloted something called Early Bird last year. Early Bird is out of Boston Children's Hospital in Harvard. It is considered the gold standard of dyslexia screeners on the market. Early Bird is out of Boston Children's Hospital in Harvard, it is considered the gold standard of dyslexia screeners on the market. And that allows us to look at predictive flags for reading success later and potential flags for dyslexia. So all first-grade students are screened with that dyslexia screener. Some growth areas, we really do want to reduce the number of students in minimal and limited proficiencies. We really want to help those bubble students and students that are struggling go into more proficient categories. We want to help students progress along in tier-one interventions, so what is a whole-classroom teacher doing to support? And then what are academic support teachers doing? We mine a lot of data to look at things like academic intervention placement and how that can tie into supporting students. And then we're also leveraging our INRS process, and our intervention is to help identify strengths and help teachers support students at all levels of learning.
Oh, our next step. So I mentioned that great 30-hour training. In addition to that 30-hour training, we are certifying 12 staff members in this methodology, so that they can be peer leaders amongst their colleagues. That practicum lasts for a year, teachers submit lesson plans each week in a closed portal, they get feedback exactly on what they're doing with students to help them really hone in that craft on being literacy experts. We're building on interventionist role with targeted research-based support. So this year we have three instructional coaches, which has been so wonderful for teachers as an additional layer of support. We have a full-time math coach, a full-time ELA coach, and an interventionist coach who's able to help teachers in things like data tracking, looking at students that might struggle, how to help them in the whole classroom and not just in that pull-out model. We're leveraging those great coaching cycles that I mentioned before that kicked off this week. We're providing staff support and feedback when observing their structured literacy block. So every administrator for all K-1 teachers are observing them, that new methodology this year is an additional layer of support, and coaching cycles are centered around that. This summer, we are offering training for the second level of structured literacy for our second and third-grade teachers. Our second-grade teachers will complete that comprehensive beginning scope from K to 2. Our third-grade teachers will kick off with morphology, so next year our third-grade students will study things like Greek and Latin prefixes, Roots, and Suffixes, and how they lend themselves to higher-tier vocabulary words in math and science, and that, again, interdisciplinary connection. And that helps with reading and spelling acquisition and language learning. And then we're going to do a roll-out of that MZOG, will be K through 3 next year, and the following year will be K through 5. And then I think as we talk about our school goals after this presentation, all of that really is goal number one, focus on age three to grade three, and really developing and building the foundation for early literacy and mathematics skills, which we'll get to math in a minute. So I'll do the 612 portion for ELA. So once again, we have really consistent performance above the state levels in ELA, we tend to be strong in that, and we do have alignment in our benchmark assessments and in our curriculum. Where our areas of growth are, is once again, it's that getting that middle group more toward proficiency and providing the targeted supports to students in levels one and two, and then really working on horizontal and vertical alignment. I just was watching a PDP meeting, which is like a professional development plan meeting that all teachers have to do, and the teacher was talking about having a rubric that in ninth-grade writing, then it works with the sophomore writing, and it works with the junior writing, and so that kids have consistent language and the expectations keep ratcheting up, you know, as they go through our system. So how do we get those conversations in alignment around these important skills? And then increase opportunities for the transfer literacy skills across all courses in humanities. And then next steps, really doing the culturally sustaining literacy practices, making sure that we're providing text to our students that have characters that look like them and sound like them and represent their lived experiences. Department-wide professional learning on data-informed lesson design, so we didn't have benchmarking really in our ELA program. And so now we have Common Lit, where students take a quick assessment and we can determine skills specifically designed that helps support our understanding of their understanding. And then finally, professional collaboration with the articulation, middle school, high school within grades, et cetera, and then having common assessments to do so. So now we're going to shift over to mathematics. So mathematics is in grades three through eight, we do Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And so a lot of our high schooler students don't take the mathematics courses, because a lot of them start, or they'll maybe just do it their freshman year, maybe sometimes their sophomore year, our juniors and seniors are not normally impacted by NJSLA testing. And so here's our mathematics scores, and once again, I'll kind of, you know, go through the whole piece. Overall, we have 61% proficiency in math as a district, and we're up 2% from last year. Not a huge number, but listen, I'll take any growth that we can get compared to the state proficiency of 42%, which is very telling, because typically, New Jersey has better achievement in these areas. So if New Jersey's at 42% across the nation, we have some concerns. And so we really want to look at, once again, if you look for the most part, especially in grades three through seven, are low numbers in level one, and then they kind of bump up in Algebra I, and then look at Geometry's down again, then up in Algebra II. That's great, so we were really like hanging out that we can move more students in seventh and Algebra I is this level two, and then across the board in level three, getting them to that meeting expectations level, and we'll talk about some strategies that we're implementing to do that. Okay, so I'm going to, you know, utilize my math person here Tiffany to help with this again. So once again, we're going to do catty corners comparing last year to this year, so our grade three went from 73% to 75% this year, 70 to 71, 71 to 77. So that was a nice transition to sixth grade. What I want to point out is when seventh grade, this is when students start taking different math pathways. So not every student in seventh grade took the grade seven, because a lot of them were taking the Algebra I assessment instead. So that's why it says only 140 students. So last year we were at 35%, and we're up to 46%, different cohort of students, but that's still something that we want to see. I want it to be higher, but we're growing and we're getting there. Math, as everyone has said, has been disproportionately impacted by COVID and interrupted learning. And we have to remember that the students who are taking these assessments were, you know, taking fractions online. And a lot of the key to algebra is ratio proportions and percents, and that early work in algebraic thinking happens at the elementary level. A lot of people don't understand that or don't really know how much algebra is in the early grades. And so when you have that interrupted learning or you're learning math online, it can really, you know, some kids were great at it, and other kids needed that hands-on tactile in-class experience. And then Algebra I, this is our seventh, eighth, and ninth graders combined. In the next slide, Tiffany's going to go through how each grade did, we're at 47%. Algebra II, we did go down, I do have a little asterisk here, and here's why. Typically, we have about three to four sections of Algebra II per year at the middle school, sometimes it's even two sections. Last year, we had eight sections of Algebra II. Because of COVID, we didn't have standardized testing data or any kind of parameters for math placement. And so a lot of students were placed in Algebra II and, you know, had interrupted learning, and so our numbers did go down. I'm very curious to see our, like, this spring coming up, our Algebra II scores, and to see how students did again, to see if our math placement process is more accurately helping support kids and place them accurately. And then in geometry, we've kind of hung steady at 45 to 44%. And to me, that's, we need to look at our programming and see like, what standards are we emphasizing and how are we making sure that students cover everything? Because once again, when we look at our AP scores, when we look at our SAT, ACT scores, we're really doing well. So we need to kind of transfer that achievement to the standards that we're exposing students to in our daily programming. All right, so I'm going to let Tiffany explain these Algebra I scores.
Hi, so this is all Algebra I, and as you can expect, you know, dark green is great, and, you know, it's just like a traffic light. So the more dark green that we see, the better, all the way down to we don't want to see much red. The top left is probably hard to see from where you are, but that is sixth-grade data. We have very few students take Algebra I in sixth grade, because Algebra I isn't typically given to 11-year-olds, but we have some really advanced kids, really, really, really advanced, who are working three years above grade level. It's a very small amount of kids, and as we expect, they were all exceeding expectations. They should be, if they're able to be in that class three years ahead of state grade level. The next group, the top row in the center is the seventh graders, that was 97 kids. And we would expect there to be, everyone to be meeting or exceeding expectations as well in seventh grade. Those kids are working two years above grade level. But we did have some strugglers, not a lot, but, you know, we have some yellow there, a little bit of orange, and a little bit of red as well. We did find out, we have some exceptions to kids who moved in very shortly before the test, and we had some issues with that a little bit. So, but, you know, we are hopeful and expecting that kids who are two years advanced should be able to, if they're truly two years ahead of grade level, should be able to meet or exceed expectations on Algebra I. And then the top right is our eighth graders. In Princeton, all of our kids take Algebra I, you know, our kids at the middle school take Algebra I at or before eighth grade. And so we aren't surprised then that we have more strugglers as eighth-grade algebra students than we did in seventh or sixth grade. We also aren't as surprised that we don't have very many exceeding expectations, because all those who we would have maybe thought exceeded expectations probably already took it as sixth graders or seventh graders. And then in the bottom row is just kind of our middle school at a glance, all the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders combined. We still have 38 and 15, so 53% of our students are meeting or exceeding expectations. We would like it to be higher, obviously. But, you know, you saw the scores before, we have six kids taking the sixth-grade NJSLA, we have kids taking the seventh-grade NJSLA. We don't have anyone taking the eighth-grade NJSLA, because we don't have a course dedicated to those standards. And so we are asking kids who take Algebra I at any time before ninth grade, we're asking them to just kind of learn some extra stuff really quick along the way. And that's not fair to the kids and not fair to the teachers necessarily. And so we're not surprised by these results, we would like them to be better, but next month, I think it's next month, the math program review results will come out, we had some outside consultants help us. So we'll talk about that at the board meeting next month and steps forward in that regard. And then on the bottom right is our ninth to 12th grade Algebra I scores. I said earlier that all of our students take Algebra I by the time they're in eighth grade, that's if they go to our middle school. If they move in after eighth grade, many kids haven't taken Algebra I yet, so we will always have at least one class this year, we have two, it looks like we probably had two last year, of students who move in from other places in New Jersey, other places in the country, and many, many international students as well. So those are the results from those kids, and that is a very heavy English language multilingual learner group. And so they're trying to learn English and algebra at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so then we're going to go back to the four elementary schools real quick and do the demographics, and then I promise we're almost done.
In an effort to be quick, these look the same as our general trends that we are seeing. High in the meeting and exceeding, low in the not meeting for all four elementaries, which is fantastic to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have our demographic trends as well, very much mirror our ELA scores and our science scores and breakdowns with our AP and SAT and ACT data. So I'm going to let Sarah then come back for the areas of strength and growth.
Yeah, so something to celebrate is that we do have that great consistent performance above state averages in the categories of meeting and exceeding, which is really where we want to see our students. We have strong curricular infrastructure and support for students and educators. So what does that look like? We have Ready Math as our main curriculum, we have iXL, we have pathways on iReady, we have Lincoln benchmarking and iReady benchmarking. The difference being that Lincoln Benchmark looks at end-of-the-year standards and how a student is progressing along. The iReady is adaptive, so if your student is on grade level, above grade level, approaching grade level, it'll tell you exactly where they're functioning. And then we have a lot of professional development around the launch of our Math Workshop. So Math Workshop essentially looks at math lessons and differentiates for the students. A teacher will teach a lesson, and then students break off into centers with similarly skilled peers, and the teacher will pull groups to the back to do deeper dives into the work. Some growth area, we want to identify the number of students in minimal and limited proficiency, especially when math begins to level in middle school. I think we have a very, very clear process for sixth-grade math placement, it worked beautifully last year, and so far, those students are thriving. So I think our math placement last year was very tight, we're going to continue with the same type of alignment for this year. We're going to create additional opportunities for differentiation through that workshop model that I just described. So for all second and fifth-grade students, elementary supervisors and principals are observing Math Workshop and providing feedback directly on Math Workshop, and we have coaching cohorts around Math Workshop as well. And then we are also looking to grow with embedding algebraic thinking throughout elementary experiences. So some next steps, we're doing professional development with Jennifer Lemp, who literally wrote the book on Math Workshop, you can get her book off Amazon. She's been wonderful with our teachers, she's actually going to come in person this year and do lab sites and studies with our teachers and provide a deeper level of professional development and support. We have our second year of Continental Math League, which was a really big hit at the elementary level last year. Students compete in five meets throughout the year, the first one will be in November. We are getting the letter out for Continental Math League soon, I know a lot of parents have been asking, we were waiting for the book to be translated in Spanish, so that our DLI students and our Spanish speakers could really delve into the math deeper. I was promised that for Monday, so Continental Math League letter should go out Monday, as soon as I get it, I'm just waiting to hyperlink it. Math Workshop implementation to support differentiation, again, really digging into strengths for students, areas where we see through their testing that they can be scaffolded and supported, that Math Workshop lends itself to doing that deeper work. And then at the elementary level, we are piloting to review updated Ready Math and the Reveal curriculum. So our core curriculum for math went through updates, we are piloting those updates, and so far, they've been really nice for teachers, sort of everything we asked the company for, they delivered and more. And we are also piloting Reveal Math this year, just to make sure that we're having the most rigorous curriculum that supports our student learning and helps them to achieve.
Thank you.
Okay, so areas of strength and growth for six to 12, our strengths are, we have some consistent performance, you know, we didn't dip much from previous years, we certainly wanted to increase, but consistent performance in meeting and exceeding expectations. We have increased our infrastructure big time, especially at the middle school, supporting students and educators, kids can get help during their PALS class, as Mr. Burr will talk about shortly. We have a math lab, we actually follow Sarah's math workshop so much that we call the Class Math Workshop, and an extra support class a couple times a week for kids who haven't yet met expectations. And we've been giving district benchmarks too, the Lincoln benchmarks that Sarah mentioned, so that we can look at that data and see really where kids are and get more real-time data of their growth over time. And we are reviewing some standards progression with our outside consultants and realigning some math standards and where they're taught, particularly at the middle school level, because we know the keys to success in math really start, don't start, but flourish in pre-algebra and algebra. And those, you know, that success in pre-algebra and algebra really predicts success in every other math and science class after that. Areas for growth, we want to increase comprehension and proficiency levels. We know that on the NJSLA, the questions are hard, they're really good math questions, but there are a lot of kids who don't even know what math the question is asking them to do. And so that goes back to some reading too, and teaching kids to read through the math and the word problems in that regard. We're spending some time looking at prior standards for teachers, doing more vertical and horizontal alignment and articulation between and across grade levels and course levels, and more increased use of the data. So secondary, we're going to leverage our math program evaluation, we'll talk much, much more about that next month with instructional resources, with standards alignment, best practices. We have been using department meeting time for remapping a little bit of standards for some teacher content articulation, ensuring there's a coherent sequence. And we're focusing on the pedagogy too, we've done some PD in past years with Math Workshop with Jennifer Lemp, and we're going to increase that usage as well, and vertical and horizontal articulation for consistency in instruction and assessment and a student-centered approach.
Thank you. Okay, final slide. So overall, next steps, so one of the things that we're kind of doing like an ask of is that we're promoting test participation, because once again, it really gives us a barometer, you know, of where our students are meeting the standards, and we want all our students to participate, even though it might interrupt their day, or it might be hard to get to that testing session. And we don't want to cause test anxiety by any means, but it really just is a nice sort of service to the district to help us understand where we are, so that we can better improve instruction and programming. We also are trying to bring transparency in our grading practices to families, as Sarah talked about with the new elementary report cards, having the reading level on there, looking at the weights of assessment in different departments like such as math, so that we can really have an accurate picture of student understanding throughout the school year, so there's no surprises when it comes to NJSLA. So there's no surprises when it comes to the SAT or whatever it may be. We really are beginning advocating in this, you know, to the board level of like additional multilingual learner support and personnel staffing, particularly at the middle level, because we do have a bulk of students at that middle level, and we know it's a really important transition time for students as they go across the school day with multiple teachers and different needs and different content ratches up. And then we really are working across the district with that interventionist role and the tier-two instructional support, so that is the math lab, those are our plus classes. Those are our plus classes. That is our AIS program at the elementary level. How can we support students in that level two, level three, kind of get over that hump to level four? And making sure those programs are standards aligned, that there's entrance and exit criteria, and that parents get reports about progress and how kids are doing in those programs. And then finally, we're going to have our math program review. We can't say it one more time at our November board meeting. I know there's been a lot of interest about that, and I think it really will help us create that plan moving forward. But one of the things I just want to say is just, you know, is patience because this is a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting. I feel like the team who's presented today, a lot of them are newer to the role and have taken on a lot as they've come here and have done a lot of wonderful work. And I think our teachers coming out of the pandemic, you know, we're still in burnout mode, but still embracing these new techniques, these new strategies, new curriculum. And of course, the state has decided to adopt new ELA and math standards. So at the state board meeting last month, they approved our new K-12 ELA and math standards. We are still waiting as a district whether or not we're supposed to implement next September in twenty-four or until twenty-five. So that is a huge budget. Another, they made it, they said twenty-four. That's a huge budget implication because that means we're revising thirteen years of standards per ELA and math. That's a lot of heavy lifting for our teachers over the summer to write the curriculum, to implement it. The good news is, is that we are really ahead of the curve. Doing this work with Math Workshop, doing this work with structured literacy. A lot of the new ELA standards are the science of reading. And we are a leader in the county. We've had PDS come, Cranberry come, West Windsor come to get trained by Sarah and to say that we have a tier-one program, meaning that every K-1 teacher is doing this work. I have a first grader and I see the work that our first graders are doing. And luckily, I'm OG trained, so I can say she's getting the support, but her school is not providing that support and that explicit reading instruction, which sets up all kids for success, all kids. Either when they come to us reading or they don't know a letter, having an explicit reading instruction sets them up for success. So there's a lot of great things going on. I want to thank the team for coming to present tonight and thank everyone for their patience. I will let the board ask some questions if they'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim, and thank you, everyone who presented. And I just realized three of the four of you are relatively new to the district. Welcome, thank you. And I guess the one, one observation I had was on the scores. The passing score is seven fifty, is that right on the NJSLA?
Yes.
It's seven twenty-five for NJGPA.
That's what I was trying to remember. Yeah, sorry. I only know NJSLA.
Yeah.
Yes, NJSLA is seven fifty.
Yeah, so we're not, so where the kid, where we have students not meeting, our average is very close to that seven fifty. So that, that's a positive. And I just wonder, we had, shifting to the science with that, yeah. The science standards changed.
Yes, in 2016.
In 2016. And did we implement the changes in 2016?
I wasn't here.
Yeah.
I remember. I, I'm not seeing full evidence of it, is what I would say. And I think the pandemic, as with everything, sort of halted a lot of that.
Right.
And I think when you look at our elementary instructional minutes, the standards are this big and the elementary minutes for science are this big. And that's a common thing across the state. That's not a Princeton issue. So, but we have this wonderful STEAM program. So how can we leverage some of those innovative standards in our STEAM program as well as our elementary classrooms?
But will they be testing that on the NJSLA? Because, yeah, right? They are.
They are.
Yeah. It's just interesting that our SAT, AP, ACT are all, you know, good.
Yeah.
And the state testing is a little lower, higher than the state. It's just interesting. Like I always wonder why that is.
Well, I would say when you look, when we did our COGAT scores for our elementary level, do you want to talk to that, Sarah, real quickly?
Yeah, what's a COGAT score?
I sure can. The COGAT is one metric that we use for our Quest program. So if you live in New Jersey, there is code law around providing services for students that are identified as gifted. If you lived over the bridge in Pennsylvania, you have an IEP for giftedness. So the COGAT is considered widely across the country to be a very good metric of potential for giftedness, right? It looks at abstract reasoning, it looks at spatial reasoning, it looks at logic and problem solving. And it's also the most equitable test for our multilingual learners. So when we looked at Quest and what we wanted equitable gifted and talented programming to look like in Princeton, an area where we know there are many, many gifted children. And I will be clear, there are many ways to be gifted. We are talking about academically gifted children. When we looked at our COGAT scores, the bell curve went like this. And we skewed so high nationally on giftedness that we had to only look at children for gifted and talented against their Princeton peers. We could not look at a national average because our bell curve was so high with potential for giftedness here. So we have brilliant students.
Yeah.
Brilliant students. Yep.
So to me, it's more of a programming issue. So how can we ensure our programming captures that talent and that brilliance? And remember, that is an equitable assessment where it's non-verbal. There's no reading required. It really is truly, kids who have severe, you know, really strong IEPs are identified. Students who are multilingual learners are identified. They're captured in that pool. So I think what we really want to look at is, especially with the pandemic, where so many times teachers were cutting through resources and standards and things because they have limited time. And so how do we kind of get back to now we have time back in the schedule? And remember too, our, our kids have changed, right? Our, our kids have changed and we have to meet them where they are. They've missed some, some standards. They've missed some social and emotional development as well. And so we're kind of resetting. And just like our kids are resetting, we're resetting our programming. So going through this math program review, going through a science program audit, our literacy program at the elementary level, we're literally looking to see where are we and how can we capture that brilliance that we're seeing across? Because we do have high AP, SAT, and ACT scores. But we always want to say, but we also have these state standards. And we want to make sure that all kids take the NJSLA. Not all kids take the AP, not all kids take the SAT or the ACT. And so we want to make sure that we're doing right by all kids and meeting their needs with the state standards that are given to us.
But, but all kids do take the PSAT, right?
Yes.
Right. And I wonder how those scores relate, but maybe next year.
Yeah, we can add that in. You want another slide? We'll give you another slide.
Maybe we can take one out. But thank you very much.
ACT tend to be higher, so parents tend to give more resources for their kids. So like one thing for a lot of the people I know, they had tutors for specific AP classes, SATs, and ACTs. So that might be part of why they scored higher.
Exactly. Yep. And that's resources, right?
A quick question probably for Sarah. The DLI program, because some of these are hitting our very young learners. So how does that fit in? Are they getting the same kind of services even though, you know, you might be teaching in Spanish for part of the day?
They sure are. That's a great question. So at CP, the Math Workshop model is used in its framework. So Math Workshop model is a framework. It's not a curriculum. So that framework is being used on the Spanish side of the house with the math programming in Spanish. And then students in the traditional side where they're having that English exposure on the other half of the day, they have Orton Gillingham in their day. And then when they go for their Spanish lessons, they also have a phonics program in Spanish. So yes, we are hitting, hitting it and more. Yes. We do need more minutes to make that all very feasible, but we are hitting it. So I think that's a great question just for equity. Teachers went to the same PD. All teachers at CP were trained in the Orton Gillingham. All of their observations during the first round are during that block. And then in the DLI side of the house, when they're in their Spanish components of the day, Math Workshop is being observed in Spanish.
Thank you. And if you need more minutes, bring us a proposal. We're, we're open. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Is presentation on district goals and school goals. I'm going to invite our principals to join me. And Charlie, this is not Tiger. All right. As the principals are coming up, I did want to thank them. Did you guys know that October is Principals Month? National Principals Month? To recognize the essential role that our principals play in making our schools great. They say in the literature that these individuals are the number-two factor in student achievement. Obviously, the number-one factor are our teachers. So they play a huge role in helping the district achieve all of the things that Dr. Two and team just talked about. Oh, this is unusual. I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. He normally does not do that, so. Stop bothering people. Okay, so I'm going to rush through my part because I thought what would be more interesting to the board is for you to hear the application of the goals and things that are happening at the school. So as you know, our goal are established through our new strategic plan for Focus 2028. I'm not going to play the video. I'm sure you've seen that before, but it will be posted on our website. Skip over that. And the board and the staff have heard previously that we have three collective priorities. So sorry, this school year. Our first collective priority is really aligned to the strategic goal of focusing on our early years, age three to grade three. And the measure of student progress that we really want to focus on this year is moving the needle on student growth and achievement and literacy and numeracy. And you could see, and I'm not going to really go through this because we want to hear from, from our schools. But each of our collective priorities have key tasks that we're going to be reporting out on. Collective priority number two is aligned to the strategic goal of wellness, inclusion, and supports. And this year, we're going to be focused primarily on the measure of student progress where students are sharing with us their perception of feeling safe, included, and nurtured in their schools and classrooms and having at least one adult that they have a meaningful relationship with at school. And the key task here, in addition to professional development, include these individuals who are behind me giving timely feedback to our staff along, in terms of the learning environments in the classrooms. As well, we have a district leadership team that meets monthly. And during those monthly meetings, we will be doing professional development as well as looking at some of our school climate data and student climate data as well. And finally, our collective priority number three is aligned to the strategic plan goal of Goal Four, Preparation for a Meaningful Life. And we are primarily going to be focused on measuring student progress of our ninth and tenth graders, wanting them to exit these grades, being on track to graduate using a variety of indicators. Key tasks include our school counselors doing check-ins with our ninth graders, exploring various opportunities for improving student voice at the high school level, and some collegial time for math and humanities departments to perform data analysis and lesson design. And then finally, students who need additional supports at the high school level in ninth and tenth grade being able to receive those. I'm going to call upon first to share some of the building level collective priorities. At the high school level, Principal Burge will come and talk about the student target this school year. One of the goals for the high school is getting to at less, at least seventy percent of students reporting that they either agree or strongly agree with the statement, "I look forward to going to school." And that is connected again to our strategic plan Goal Four with the student perception and safety. And the other goal that the high school is looking at this year is focus on our ninth and tenth graders, where the goal is having a hundred percent of our ninth graders on track to graduate. So Principal Burr, if you want to talk about some of the practices that are happening.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So it's a tall order to get teenagers to roll up out of bed one day and say, seventy percent of you are going to love coming to school. So, but we're trying. The, our goal actually is specifically about this, targeting ninth graders starting from day one, actually before day one in the summer. We identify students who are off track before they got to our door. So those are students who received a D or an F in middle school. Now, keeping in mind, some of the kids, we just talked about how brilliant our, our kids are. Some of our students were just not putting in all efforts in their eighth grade. And I happen to had, to have had one at home. He's now thankful in college. But so then that requires our teachers really get to build that relationship really quickly in targeting each student. So to achieve this, we started with a, with a learning labs. Dr. Dineen in the Idea Center actually reviews weekly, on a weekly base, every single ninth grader's grades. And if they're seeing indicators going downward, she pulls in and do one-on-one tutoring by herself. She also connects the students with the student tutors in the Idea Center. And additionally, we now have a club called Get It Done. I'm not supposed to have favorites, but I do have two favorite teachers who volunteered their time for years after school, specifically targeting our Black and Hispanic students and students with IEPs. And they just bring these kids along and do homework together with them. And I was told that one of our APs happened to see one of the teachers in the parking lot meeting with her mother going to dinner or something. And there were eight Black students following her, telling on her to her mother that this teacher is assigning too much homework to them. So, so building relationships and targeting specific groups and provide one-on-one intensive support and making sure every, every student is on track to graduation is the approach we take. So thank you.
You see why he doesn't have the certification? There you go. Case in point. So Princeton Middle School, and one of the things the board hopefully is saying that the goals at the district level and at our school levels are all aligned back to the strategic plan. But we also are all focused on similar goals. So you will see that at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level, we're all focused on this strategic Goal Two that is wellness, inclusion, and supports, and specifically Target 2A in terms of the measures. So at the middle school, in terms of Goal Two, Target 2A, they have been looking at their data. If you recall, last spring, we reported out on students self-identifying and feeling safe and welcome at school. So the middle school would like to specifically increase the percentage of Black students who feel safe and welcome at school. And they would also like to increase the percentage of students who identify as other. The middle school also has a target around Goal Three. And the strategic goal Three is Opportunities for All. Again, they are going to be working to increase growth and proficiency of students in literacy, math, and science. They have looked at their data, both seventh grade and eighth grade, in mathematics. For seventh graders, they know that they have thirty-six students that they want to increase their performance on NJSLA by an average of ten points. And in eighth grade, they have forty students that they are, have a goal of increasing their performance on New Jersey SLA in mathematics by ten points. Okay, I'm going to let Principal Burr talk about what they're doing this year to help them with those goals.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody. For those of you who have known me for fourteen years, it's customary for me to have a school goal that talks about belonging, safety, inclusion, creating a nurturing environment. And so as Dr. Kelly mentioned, we have a goal specifically targeting students trying to increase their feelings in, in the way they belong to school. I'm a firm believer that if you belong to school, you perform better in school. And so we have had several ways already this year. Interestingly enough, we have a new mural in our cafeteria who was created by a former student at the middle school who was also part of our multilingual community. He has a very interesting story. And getting a chance to watch him paint and talk to him about his time at the middle school sort of spurred some, some new ideas for us. We have two in how, we have two mentor, mentee projects that we're kicking off this month. One left led by PMS staff member and counselor Sharon D. Sebastian, and another that is being championed by Ebony La. and another that is being championed by Ebony Latimer that will run at the same time as our new Saturday East Team Academy, which I will tell you about in just a moment. We had several affinity clubs kicked off this month. We had a great celebration of Hispanic heritage. We had our Fall Moon Fest last Friday. All students were invited to celebrate middle school traditions, the games and the fun that you typically have. This year, we had a Bollywood performance and a mariachi band as well. And I wanted to highlight that our parent community engagement evening has been moved up from our traditional spot in January to November 16th to try to catch our families and connect our families even sooner this year. So related to belonging and inclusion, this is a goal that we are always, always working towards. And want to thank you for some time to talk about some of these things. And I want to thank the staff at Princeton Middle School for all of their efforts. Related to our goals in math, I'm very blessed to work with amazing colleagues. And you've already heard a little bit from Tiffany Brennan this evening. Last late spring, Dr. Two and I started meeting with math teachers to talk about the advent of a new intervention in math. And when Tiffany came on board, she jumped right in and helped us bring this to fruition. We've identified sixth to eighth grade students who did not meet or exceed expectations on last spring's NJ SLA scores, which a lot of you had seen just a few moments ago. We've now created an additional math period twice a week with their math teacher. So you get two extra periods every week with your math teacher. These small classes provide students an opportunity to work through skills in which they previously struggled while also helping them succeed in their current math class. So building those foundations, but also supporting their learning. To meet each student's needs, teachers work in small groups, other students work on the computer on an online program customized to strengths and weaknesses. We have also recently brought in a new intervention resource known as roadmaps. Every student in our building who scored below 750 now has access to this resource. Students take a diagnostic and then they get a personalized report of skills that they need to work on, those foundational skills. And we're very excited about these opportunities. I have another colleague that I'm indebted to by the name of Dr. Joy Barnes Johnson. You've heard her name said a few times tonight. We have actually planned for 14 Saturdays to host a scholars program, the East Team Saturday Scholars Program, integrating the disciplines of entrepreneurship, science, technology, art and mathematics into a collaborative-based program for learners that scored again, that's 749 and below on the ELA or math. In addition to bringing in a focus on science, and there's three strands, I'm happy to tell you about those. But we're also going to have several guest speakers from Princeton University. And the thing that I love most, we're going to have student leaders from Princeton High School mentoring and working with the kids. We have over 100 people who have indicated their interest. So over 100 students have indicated that they would like to come to school on Saturdays. So there's we're back to that belonging goal though, right? And we've got 100 kids who want to come on Saturday because Monday to Friday is not enough. We're trying to engage students in those interdisciplinary kinds of thinkings, particularly in STEM. Again, we're going to have 14 different sessions. There's an environmental pathway, which will also help us meet our sustainability goals that we're trying to work towards. There's the physics of play. Think about those body kinesthetic things that we learn when we're watching somebody throw a fastball or somebody put that perfect arc on a jump shot. And then you also are going to have several science and tech challenges. I'm very excited about the things that we're doing. I couldn't do it without my colleagues. I come to work for my colleagues. They're special people. And once again, I want to thank the staff at Princeton Middle School for a great start to the school year. Thank you very much.
And last but not least, our elementary schools. So they share school goals, obviously specific for their the cultures of their buildings. But they are focusing on three target areas. Again, with goal one, it's age three to grade three. One of the targets is looking at student access. And this is very jargony, but tier two, tier three means that it's support beyond the the classroom. That we provide that support very early on so that we can see that those students are increasing their achievement scores by 5%. And we do that by way of students that need additional supports to get up to a grade level. And then those students who perhaps are already at grade level. And we want to make sure that we are enriching their experiences. Their second goal area is again with strategic goal one, but this is target one C, where we want to see in mathematics that we're reducing the percentage of students in the bubble range by 5% on a assessment that's now given to all students in grades two through five. And that's the Lincoln Form C. And then at ELA, we're looking at 80% of students, as Sarah talked about, that assessment called DRA three, who will be at the grade level by the end of the year in grades K through five. And then similar to the middle school and the high school, elementary schools are also going to be focused on strategic goal two, specifically target two A, by increasing by five percentage points for all students in three areas. And these are the questions that we ask students in the survey that will give mid-year and then at the end of the year that they have at least one adult of a relationship that if they need to, they can go to. They look forward to going to school and my teachers treat me with respect. So I'm just going to ask a couple of the elementary teachers, I'm sorry, a couple of the elementary principals to give examples of how you're seeing these goals in your schools.
I guess I'll go first. Good evening. I'm Angela Sisso-Stens, and I'm the proud principal of Johnson Park Elementary School. And we specifically created goals this year that are consistent across the four elementary schools so that our teachers can really work closely together and that we have continuity across the four the four buildings. So some of the things that I will report on will be replicated in all the buildings, but we'll try to keep it as concise as possible. So one of our target areas is obviously being really proud about the implementation of the Orton-Gillingham program in kindergarten and first grade this year and then rolling out to second and third next year and then fourth and fifth the following year. I can tell I sat in on the training this past us this past year. And in some of my observations, I'm just blown away at how quickly our students are grasping the concepts. And students that I saw perhaps in kindergarten last year that might have been a little bit more timid in their learning are now the most outspoken in their class because they felt so confident in these approaches. It's multi-sensory and students are really engaged throughout the 90 minutes that we are teaching our English language arts. So really exciting to see how this will roll out in the next few years and how our students will be even more proficient as we move along in the process. The second part is again, supporting our students and staff in the workshop model in our mathematics program and making sure that our teachers have the tools that they need to be successful so that again, our students receive achievement. And then through all of this work, it's really looking at closely our data and finding the students that perhaps are not meeting benchmark. And then thinking about specifically individual plans for each of those students about what we are going to do as a school and a community to support our learners so that they do get closer to those benchmarks, if not at grade level before the school year is over. So there's a lot of conversations, there's a lot of meetings, there's a lot of data mining, which used to be really scary terms that we would talk about. But our teachers have gotten much more equipped about handling all of the tools that we now have. Maybe that was one of the benefits of COVID is that we have a lot more platforms to use. But we are able to drill down and see exactly who needs our extra supports. So for Johnson Park, I can talk about some of our AIS classrooms are using some of the methods to push in to our kindergarten classrooms, which we didn't do that so early in the school year the previous years, but we're able to do that a little bit sooner. And we're also focusing on our MLL students. And again, that was a population that we often did not reach until perhaps the spring. So we're excited that we have the resources to have those conversations and supports in place much, much sooner so that our students have opportunities to show that growth before the year ends. And then I'll just quickly and then turn off to my colleagues here. Just talking a little bit about social emotional learning and making sure that our students feel safe and happy to come to school. And I would say that for many of you who know me, I spent 20 years at the high school level. And this is my fourth year at the elementary school level. And my metric of knowing whether kids are happy to be at school is the amount of hugs I get when they get off the bus. So that tells me that they're excited to be in school. But really, just making sure that our students feel that they're supported, feel that they're heard, feel that they're seen in all of our classroom spaces. And that also extends to the staff, that extends to us. I mean, when you drive to work in the morning, you really want to be excited about where you're going to work. And that trickles down to our students. So while we are really supporting our students and making sure they're connected, we're also making sure we're taking care of our teachers and ourselves because we are a community and we want to love and support one another. And it really does start at the youngest learner. So I look forward to our progress this year and know that this is certainly a five-year plan and what we will add on to the next school years to come. So I'll turn it over to my friends here.
Good evening. I'm Max Okto, Principal Riverside School. Hello, everyone. And yeah, I, you know, this is my third month in Princeton. And I'm very excited, though, when we talk about, you know, early intervention in academics for our students. Coming from the other districts, I'm very impressed about what Princeton does have to offer to our students. You heard already some of these programs from Dr. Two and Ms. Moore that what we have to offer. But, you know, in the beginning of school, we do a lot of baseline testing for our students to see where they are, where they are in the learning process across the spectrum, which is wonderful. And then we jump on that right away to, you know, and not really wait. So you've heard programs such as our AIS program to support to support some of our students. We also have our Quest program to enrich those students who also need more enrichment and push them a little bit further. So those are wonderful programs, our tier one interventions, seeing them across all the grade levels that all the students and kids are getting is is great. And then our INRS with tiers twos and three to focus on the learning of, you know, of of individuals to really support them. So as a newer employee to the Princeton Public Schools, I love seeing supports that we have and and how much we deeply care about our students and their growth. The elementary schedule, I can also say, has the focus period in the in the schedule, which is an area, it's almost as a win, a win what I need for students. So students can sit in small groups with the teacher, focus on any academic subject across, you know, could be ELA, could be math, could be science, and really focus on what they need for those 30 minutes during day-to-day instruction, which is which is great because again, it's very tailored to the student. From an SEL point of view, I wanted to say, and and, you know, being a new principal, and we always say, of course, we care about our students, we want to get to know them, but then there's our actions. And since I've been there, I've tried to be very visible. I go to every classroom every morning to greet the kids, to say hello, to greet the staff. Here we go. We're starting a new day. We got this. You know, and and just come in every every day to pop in a morning meeting, say hello. I just I'm finishing my tour. It's not the Eras Tour, but it's the Mr. Okto Tour. And it is, it is basically, my daughter, my daughter just went to the theater on Sunday for that. But she's 16. But I basically did a read aloud in the lower grades, K to K to three. Every room I did a read aloud. I'm almost done. And by November, I'm doing a Q and A with fourth and fifth graders to meet Mr. Okto to get to know them. And it has been remarkable in the hallways when I see them in the lunchroom because I'm getting to know all of their names. There's 400 of us between students and staff at Riverside. So but but, you know, to say we care is one thing, but then to be to to do it and get out there and really get to know, to make those connections is important. So the SEL piece is critical. We want kids to be happy, want to come to school, want to make connections with the staff, with the principal and feel comfortable, you know, having conversations. So that's it.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Luis Ramirez. I'm the principal of Littlebrook School. Thank you for having us here this evening. I won't reiterate everything that my colleagues said, but what they said. I want to kind of touch base on more of the social and emotional learning that takes place. Specifically, you know, with Littlebrook School, it starts from the beginning of the day. If you drive by our school at any point during drop-off, you will see numerous staff members opening doors to greet the children as they get out of their cars and standing by the buses to say good morning. At Littlebrook, it's not my student, it's our students. You can walk into any classroom at any point in time, and I like to brag that my teachers do this. They will make any person feel like they are the most important person in the room. And I don't say that lightly. I walk into a classroom, I see students who are engaged, I see students who are laughing, I see teachers who are singing, who maybe shouldn't be singing, but they're singing, lots of smiles on faces, children getting along with one another. That warms my heart. I had the opportunity to sit in on a an SEL check-in during the day due to recent events. You know, we we did a check-in in one of our classes. I was happened to just be in there. And it was called A Rose and a Thorn. And during that rose and a thorn, each student got a chance to share something that they wanted to celebrate about themselves. And the thorn was something that might be on their minds. And this is vital information, right? Because it helps our teachers guide our students in how to manage these difficult times. But also, it helps us to celebrate their celebrations along with them. So at Littlebrook, every student has a voice. It's not just the teachers, it's every single staff member at that school. And I am so proud of every single one of them. I will give you a story of one young man that I was watching today at recess. I'm not going to tell you his name, but he'll know who he is. He was watching his friends play a game of tag. And they happened to continuously tag the same individual student. He spoke up and he said, guys, that's not fair that you're doing that all the time. Tag me. That speaks volumes to the education these children are getting at Littlebrook School, not just academically, but socially. I am so proud to be part of Littlebrook School. Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing team. Principal Gruches tonight is at in class with NJ PSA, so she was unable to join. I do want to share with everyone, there are two things. The first is if you go to the district's website, and if you go to district, you can click on Strategic Plan. And you will find our strategic plan. You'll have background information, just in case you're new to the community, of how we put the plan together. But year over year, you'll have information that will give you updates about where the district is with our planning. So this is the 2023, 2024 school year. And you will find for each one of the schools, including preschool, our action plans for the school, including the district's action plan for this year. In addition to that, if you click on 2023, 2024 Milestones of Progress, you will be able to find, and I'm not sure if this is what at SAC meeting, one of the community members asked if we would have a dashboard. But this is just a spreadsheet of our milestones of progress. And this milestones of progress is going to be available for the school district as well as for each school. So if there are any community members or board members that are interested in how we're doing in relationship to our actions for the strategic plan, you can definitely find it here at the district's website. Any questions? All right, I'm going to turn the final remainder of our superintendent's report over to Matt Bolden. And I'm going to release our principals because they have an early start tomorrow.
Thank you. What's that? I'm going to practice brevity, being that we have a community forum tomorrow night for a brief hour virtually about the upcoming referendum, which is three weeks away, November 7th, 2023, at the general election. So I posted on here the referendum website. I post on here also on the agenda, if anyone's looking for the link to the meeting tomorrow night. That's on there, where you can access the link for tomorrow night. I'm just going to go over this two-page brief analysis of key dates. Actually, the voter registry- Actually, the voter registration deadline was today. Early in-person voting starts in another 11 days. Vote by mail applications must be received by the 31st, and the polls are on November 7th. All four of our schools are open, but the, it is a general election, so all the sites are open for voting. We can't tell you how to vote, but we can tell you some of the really important things that are on the referendum. Safety and security. So two security vestibles at, at the high school, the pack entrance in the back and the front, new doors and locks at the high school and the middle school. These are important to have, push-button locks in case of an emergency. We're updating security cameras at all six schools and protective window film at all six schools. We're also planning to renovate the high school cafeteria. We want to improve the amount of kids who could get lunch in a short period of time. I was there with some consultants and our, and our architect on Friday, along with our high school team, facilities director, and it was actually a light day, being a homecoming, and you could see the crowds that are trying to get through the lines quickly. So we want to streamline that, we want to add a little more seating. We're also looking at some upgrades, the middle school, some minor upgrades at the pool, repairs at the echo lab, which is both detention basin for wet weather events, a lot of rain, and also a teaching lab for environmental science teacher, Jim Smark. And we're going to be doing playground updates, upgrades at all five schools, accepting the high school, which doesn't have a playground. We're going to be looking at drainage improvements at at least two of the schools, and improving accessible playground equipment. We have some, an upgrade of the high school main athletic field and track resurfacing. We're continuing to improve our energy-efficient building climate controls with controller HVAC systems. We are also looking at some minor upgrades to some HVAC ductwork. And then something that's going to affect the whole district positively is upgrading our 10-gig network infrastructure. We're looking at some cell service boosters at two of our schools that Johnson Park has notoriously poor cell service, and the middle school also has very weak service. And that kind of summarizes the, what this referendum entails. Once again, please speak with your neighbors, friends, and let them know that these are all very important things. That's all I have to add. I don't know if anyone from Operations wants to add anything that I might have missed.
Matt, could you say a bit more about state aid?
Yeah, so in referendums, we get, so the state makes everything confusing, and as you know, so it's stated at 40%, even on the question, but the state has prorated that to 85%, so that's down to 34%. So for this particular referendum, we will get back 31.28% of the principal and interest used to finance the improvements. We're also being very conservative fiscally here, and we will look to issue this debt over 13 years. We would not want to pay for equipment over a longer period of time than its useful life. So we've looked at each of the improvements and then made the debt maturities in line with that. We're forecasting to get a little over $5 million, that's dependent on the forecast of, once again, 13 years of debt at 3.75%. It seems to be a little déjà vu, the bond markets have not been really participating with us in our favor, I should say, recently, but we're still a ways off. If it's successful, we would look to hopefully issue debt right ahead of the holiday season. So, yeah, that's, that's that. Any other questions?
Matt, could you just share with the public, some of the speakers who will be on the panel tomorrow night?
I meant to mention, I thank you so much. Yeah, we have some great guest speakers tomorrow night. Chief Boucher, we have our architect, George Duthy will be there, we have bond counsel and our financial advisor will be there, Dave Harding, our facilities director will be there, I'll be there, a few of our operations committee members will be there, and it's going to be a lot of fun.
And what time is it?
7:00 PM. I did say that before. 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Moving on now, you gentlemen have been very patient, we appreciate it, for the student board members' report.
Sure. Hi there. Oliver and I are really happy to be here. For our first presentation to the board, we thought it would be helpful to provide a general overview on how the school year is going so far from the perspective of PHS students.
So throughout this meeting, you've heard a lot about what's going on at PHS, but we wanted to reorganize a couple of important events from the school year so far into a few central themes that we'll explore and advocate for in future board meetings.
So the first one of these themes is school spirit. I think we're all excited to be back in our usual PHS rhythm, especially with Ms. Burge, a familiar face at the helm. Just a week ago, we had the homecoming football game, which was a super exciting time.
The stands are absolutely packed. In fact, the only problem with the game was that there was hardly any place to sit.
And, and moments where the school at large gets to connect with programs like the football team or the studio band who played at halftime are really special, and they do a lot for building this sort of school spirit that I think is really important, and I'm sure Oliver does as well. There's nothing quite like seeing your peers get together and do something cool that they couldn't have accomplished without PHS's support.
So we're going to focus a lot this year on how empowering extracurriculars, making it easy for the student body at large to interact with them, should be a priority for the district.
And speaking of, the club fair unfolded at the school recently, and it was a similarly lively and packed affair. Again, I think students at PHS are always excited when the administration lends support to the communities we build within the building, and the beginning of the year has been great in that respect, and we're hoping to keep it up and expand on it.
Shifting gears a little, there have been a few cleanliness issues at PHS. Many bathrooms are already extremely messy, and a seeming increase in trash in the parking lot is unfortunate.
And, yeah, and I think where that intersects with the board is that generally initiatives like PHS's new composting programs that encourage students to care for the space around them are pretty popular and also necessary and, and should be expanded upon and supported.
Let's shift to our second theme of the night, cultural exchange at PHS. This year's off to a great start, with most PHS students attending the lively Hispanic Heritage Month Assembly.
Additionally, an increase in multicultural clubs means that PHS students from lots of different backgrounds are getting more chances to learn about and share ideas, traditions, and knowledge. The board has done a lot of great work making sure that these sort of programs and clubs are supported, and we think it's really cool.
And not to sound like a broken record, but advocating for these intraschool programs is something that's really important to Alex and I.
The last thing, theme we want to take a look at is school safety. Safety policies at PHS are becoming tighter. This was especially noticeable at homecoming, where PHS students had to have their lanyards on hand to be let in, but much of the student body is not taking these new actions super seriously, I would say, just as, as a student myself who's going to see in the milieu at this school.
Yeah, so the number of students actually wearing their lanyard in the manner that the PHS administration is asking us to is surprisingly low, and the problem, in our opinion, is mostly one of communication. So students haven't been told extremely explicitly why we're wearing, why wearing lanyards helps to keep us safe, and most aren't buying into the idea that they're actually changing much in our day-to-day school experience.
And so although PHS feels like an incredibly safe place in the status quo, providing a little more insight and transparency for the student body in terms of why new safety policies are being put into place, and how regulations actually tangibly help the school become more secure, would probably be a helpful step for the board or the PHS administration to take in making sure that those safety policies actually get followed up on, because it's impossible to make sure every student is wearing their lanyard, be super punitive there, but we think building, yeah, a community around wanting to get those things done would be beneficial for the school.
All of this is to say, while the beginning of the 2023 to 2024 school year at PHS has been great, there are a few areas that we'll want to stress as we work with the board and the student body this year, so that our existing policies can be just that much more effective at building a cohesive, energetic school spirit, setting up opportunities for cultural exchange at PHS, and maintaining school's safety.
We want to thank all of the board members for their service to the school district and for giving us a platform to help the board understand PHS students better, and hopefully to make sure that our peers are able to understand the board better as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do, I'm going to turn it over to, to Mrs. Cantor and Mr. McDonald. I know you spoke with them about cleanliness issues, and they will be all over that. With regard to, my daughter's a junior, and she does not like to wear her lanyard, and she said, I just don't understand, they know, they know, why can't we just show it when we go in, and then they leave it alone? I was like, well, they're not going to know, you know, all day that you belong there, right? So I hear you, what you're saying about communication. I strongly encourage you to, that's not something the board gets involved with. So I strongly, strongly suggest you speak with the high school administration. I think it's a very valid point, and hopefully, you know, we would like, I would like my daughter just to wear the lanyard because she's being told to, but I understand. I guess that's part of the, the benefit of a Princeton education, critical thinking. So please, please speak with the administration at the high school.
Hi, that was a great report. It really had, like, a lot of things that we learned. But I do want to say, when I walked into the building today, many hours ago, I happened to run into Dave Harding, who is our facility, facilities manager, and he was working on a to-do list, and he mentioned that he was working on that. So I suggested that he have his team really look at each bathroom, specifically in the middle school and the high school, and also in our last operations meeting, it was brought up by a member of the public that we work on a reporting system. So like, if you see something that there's an easy way to say, you know, bathroom four, you know, probably needs some attention, or there's something wrong, so it's something Matt, Bolden, and his team are looking into, and, and ways in which we can easily have small issues like that reported. So I'm glad you definitely brought that up. It's something, you know, we feel important, I think everyone should take pride in their school.
I think really important to emphasize is that I think our facilities team does a really good job in helping keep the school clean, but I think the main issue here is having students buy into that, because you'll see a lot of things with people, like vandalizing bathrooms, or just like, not, if they like drop a paper towel, not throwing it into the trash, and I think that's something that might need to be emphasized. I don't know, maybe at the board level, but also especially, I don't know if it follows the board level.
Oliver, I can't even do it in my house. How am I going to do it for, for all the students?
Yeah, I'm working on my daughter's room first, but, no, but I think what you brought up is a great thing, like taking pride in your school, you know, and security involves the vigilance of all, so it's, it's caring about your fellow, your neighbors and your teachers, and, and, you know, understanding why, let's say, you need to wear a lanyard so everyone understands who's supposed to be in the building and who's not, and it's easily identifiable, is a great way, and, and coming up with ways to publicize that, and why it's not just to be annoying that we're having you wear your lanyard, that we care, but taking care of our facilities. I know Matt and his, you know, Dave and his team have really been focused on that, so I think the bathrooms will be the next real focus, or the smaller things that you guys can help us identify and, and, and get some easy fixes on.
Definitely, yeah. Obviously, the board is not like releasing statements about paper towels in the bathroom. I, I, I do think it's, it's cool and helpful that we're able to kind of bring, I think we've talked a lot about, you know, belonging and wanting to be involved in your school community, and I think because we are, you know, part of that school community, we'll hopefully be able to bring the board, not just policy actions that we think would be beneficial, but also just like symptoms of the overall school environment, right, that maybe don't require specific like policy steps, but are just interesting to keep in mind for how the school's looking, and a different perspective in that front.
No, it was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really important for us to hear from you. As you said, it's a way for us to connect to what's happening in school, but also for your, your colleagues, your, the other students in the school, just for you to be a voice for them and to hear what happens here. We welcome you to stay, but it's also very late. You always, you always can feel free to go if you have homework to do, but we really appreciate you being here, and thank, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. This should be a long meeting, so you should stick around. The other ones will seem much shorter. All right. Thank you very much for your, for your report. We appreciate it. Like, as you saw, we're asking taxpayers for $13 million for upgrades to the school, and, and I appreciate your respect for that, because we all should take responsibility to ensure our buildings are treated with respect, because it is the taxpayers that support all the upgrades and changes. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we're moving on now to public comment, our first of two, and I just want to apologize, it's two hours into our meeting. We try not to go this far, this long in a meeting, we just had a lot of, of information to provide tonight, but we'll start with our first public comment. Please, I'm going to go on the list here. First up is Kip Berman. If you could just please state the street you live on and keep your comments to three minutes or less so that we can hear from everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Daphna, and all of the board. I know you're a public servant, and I appreciate your work that you do on behalf of our school. My name is Kip Berman, I live on 73 Birch, it's the corner of Birch and John, right by Community Park. What I want to address tonight is what I sadly see as a lack of fairness and long-term foresight in the district's current proposals. I'd like to first recognize and thank Michelle Tuck-Ponder for correctly pointing out last Wednesday that our children deserve walkable neighborhood schools. And for too long, many of the children in the Jackson Witherspoon neighborhood surrounding Community Park, where my family lives and my children go to school, have been partially denied access to just that, due to outdated zoning that sends many of the kids on the street to Johnson Park, a wonderful school, but it's only accessible to them by bus or car. I want those kids to come and walk down the hill to CP, whether it's DLI students or, if necessary, in an English-only track. I want my children to know and learn with all their neighbors. But what is not fair or sensible is building a two-headed mega-school that is twice Community Park's current size and far exceeds any other elementary school in our district, in a neighborhood that already sees severe traffic congestion, park, and parking woes, and does not have the infrastructure to handle it. There was some mention about also the fire department and the emergency services. Doubling Community Park's size, that means students, teachers, and staff, is a logistics nightmare that will decimate the very neighborhood my family and so many others call home. We want a vibrant community at Community Park, but creating a two-in-one mega-school with two separate principals, separate school events, students that will never sit in the same room with one another or become friends, and parents that will similarly not get to connect with and support one another, that's not community, but the very opposite. It is not in the interest of our children's mental health and well-being to plow ahead on a massive segregated mega-school. Let's keep the community in Community Park by redrawing outdated zoning maps and allowing all of the children of Jackson Witherspoon to attend this fantastic school. But that alone won't solve all our district's long-term issues. The most responsible way, in my view, to address our growing population, not just at our elementary school, but most notably our already overcrowded middle school, is to tear down, I'm sorry, building, is to tear down this condemned asbestos-laden, and as I understand it, unsalvageable, building right here on Valley Road, and build a fifth and sixth grade school in its place. We are told this option costs too much, but that's up to the voters, and I will gladly vote yes on such a referendum that provides an intelligent and fair long-term solution. Letting a condemned building rot forever in prime Princeton real estate is just as costly in terms of lost opportunity, and the district will still have to pay to tear it down eventually. We need a fifth grade and sixth grade school in Princeton to help elementary and middle school crowding and the very real mental health challenges early adolescents face, and we need to rezone, as Michelle wisely pointed out, to allow local kids to go to their local elementary schools, which will make our communities and schools even stronger. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I know it's a long night.
Next up is Karen Jazerni.
Thank you all. I want to echo my thanks to the board. This is proof that your work is long and valuable. So I live at 181 Mount Lucas Road, about two blocks up the road. I've been there for 35 years. I am a parent of a very proud Princeton Public School graduate, and we have a great experience. So I come to this from a place of real support for what you're doing, only to remind you that whatever it is the school district chooses to do to support the learning and teaching of our students now and in the future, whether it's expansion at Community Park, expansion at Community Park and a middle school at this location, one of the things we have to remember about this particular area is you share it as the civic and public service hub of Princeton with a lot of other important partners. And so how we share that space is very different at Community Park or at this location than it is at almost any other school, I think any other school in Princeton. What do I mean by that? or at this location than it is at almost any other school, I think any other school in Princeton. What do I mean by that? We share our sidewalks, we share our roads, we share our parking lots, we share our bike lanes, existent and non-existent. We share our, we share our pedestrian infrastructure, struggling and basically unsupported as well. And we put a burden on that as we add to that community. And so I would encourage you, as you think about these plans and the extra month you have to make some decisions, is to think about what kind of leadership role you can play in changing that environment, supporting that environment, supporting the families, the students, the staff, the poor people who have to drive through this building every day through that nasty intersection at Cherry Hill Road and Mount Lucas Road, and find a way for all of us to prosper and thrive so that there can be more support for this important project. It's not just the neighbors who live here, but it is the people who work and study and play at Community Park, Community Park School, the poor bus drivers who have to pull in and out. How do we make it possible for people to co, more than coexist, to thrive? And I think that's part of what a great school district does to catalyze a great town. I know it's putting a lot of responsibility on you to solve a problem that you didn't create, but it gives, it provides a leadership role for all of us to move forward in a way that is better for the community and therefore better for the kids and the staff at the school district. So how you think about that? I, I encourage you to think broadly about your partners, the public safety partners who need to use this space as well, the business community that's beginning to, both historic and is beginning to really thrive in this neighborhood. How do you think about the, the individual streets and corners and blocks that people live on and have to travel through and around as you all have to do your business? How you think about becoming a catalyst, a leader, a provocateur, if you will, of improvement, not just for your facilities and for the teaching and learning that you champion, but for the whole community? I'm going to hit that more three minute.
Very well done. Thank you, Karen. Judy Durham.
Hi there. And actually, I want to tell you guys, the lanyard issue is still when you're in the workplace. So you will never get away from it. It will persist. So anyhow, I just want to tell you all, my name is actually Judy Donella Durham. I grew up here in Princeton and I went to CP. I'm a CP alum and I'm very proud because back then we only had two schools, CP and Riverside. And when we graduated high school, CP alums were some of the strongest academically and not only that athletically. So we're very proud of our legacy and we represent well, those of us that still have children at the school. There's quite a few of us that have children at CP. And by choice, we wanted to be at CP because we love the community for its diversity and the fact that when I went there as a student, we had people who came from all over the world fleeing from wars in Central America. First time I heard Spanish, that I wanted to learn Spanish. I thought it was super important. I felt like, why is everybody learning French? It's ridiculous. So you guys are doing this to our community that we love, that the town loves. And I want you to understand Princeton, there's a legacy when the name Princeton, the Princeton plan, I'm not going to give you a history lesson about what other people say, how Princeton has redistricted their communities based on neighborhoods. They're no longer neighborhood schools. They want people by grade level. We don't want that. We love our neighborhood schools. But this plan you are doing at CP would destroy our school. For 600 students, nobody else has that capacity at their school. But you want to put it here in a lot that has no space. We would lose a new playground you promised. Then we would have no green space for our children to play, to gather together, to have fun on the weekends because we go back. On the weekend, we go back and we play and we hang out with each other at Community Park. It's not just a school, it's our community. So you're, in addition to the valid points they made about traffic, because it services a whole community, what you're doing is making a plan for Princeton that perhaps not just the state of New Jersey is going to look at when you have a problem, but perhaps nationwide that they have come to us in the past. So if you are making this decision since May, we had our meetings, I don't know how we got to today in October. We've already spent $50,000 on architects. I'm sure they made great plans. But it's telling you that we need another school, but we don't need another elementary school, perhaps double the size of CP. Yes, it would be great if our students could all walk, but you know what? Middle school students can also ride bicycles to school. So why don't we consider expanding? We see lots of them riding bikes to school. Why do we have to destroy Community Park to do this? In addition, more students at that school would be something that would cause, if we have another pandemic and we have communicable diseases outbreak at a school that has 600 students and the other ones don't. How do we protect the most vulnerable where their parents are receiving social services, who have to leave work to take care of a sick child? It is not just one thing, it's compounding. Of everything you do, you affect the community and the parents that live and work there and want to stay in Princeton because that is the goal and it makes our community better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rob Freidenberg.
Good evening or good night. I guess I see if I start talking before you hit start, I get a couple extra seconds. So thank you. Thank you for, for this opportunity tonight. I want to thank the board for the commitment to this issue of long-term planning. I had the privilege to be a part of an early advisory group to this effort, pre-COVID, which seems like a lifetime ago, and can attest to the seriousness with which board members are approaching this issue. And want to call out particularly Beth Baron and Brian McDonald, who've been carrying the torch for this for, for years. So I, I came here tonight with, with the hope of kind of hoping for more time to talk about and deliberate this. So I was so glad to hear right off the bat that more time was granted to think about this because this is a big decision. And I know there's a lot to do beyond the decision of which one you go with, but you are choosing a, a step that is going to be the one that you're committed to with a lot to figure out in between. So I'm grateful to hear more time for this. And I, I've been having trouble getting my head around a 600-seat or 600-capacity community park. This is where the community is growing. So understand that we, we need to put people in the place where, where they are and, and there's only limited options. But I was also pleased to hear that additional capacity is being considered for the other elementary schools. And while I understand why the growth is here, no one's school should be radically transformed to accommodate the growth that's occurring. So really encourage the, the team to look at what else can be done in other schools. I was also pleased to hear that DLI is, is maintaining a position in, in this, that this is an element of the study. I do think there's more that we can do to keep celebrating the uniqueness and success of this program and hopefully attract more to it. I think DLI is a critical element of success at the current CP. I'd be curious to know more about how kids in all the schools, wherever this is being considered, the, the plan for attending school while construction's going on. It seems like a, a big issue at CP if you're going to be doubling the size of it and, and would, would like to understand more about that. And then, you know, we've heard that Valley Road was considered perhaps too constrained. I work in planning. I work with architects a lot. I've never heard an architect say that you can constrain, that the, the challenge of a site's constraints creates the opportunity for architects, but we understand how, how expensive it also is. But I think in, in some ways it'd be good to, I, I know that there's only so much money you can put into a consultant, but having two options to consider next to each other as, as you take the next step, like what would the next step of looking at a five, six school here include? And I know there's a lot of constraints to the site to be figured out, but it would be really interesting to see that compared to the other, the other sites that you're, you're talking about. So keeping two on the table as, as potential thing. But mostly want to, want to thank you for, for your effort in this. Looking to the long term is, is really important and these are tough decisions. And I think we just hope for kind of an equitable solution that ensures that, that all the schools are kind of carrying the weight of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wyatt Lloyd. And please, if you could, just the street you live on and the town. Thank you.
Hi, Wyatt Lloyd. I live at 12 College Road in, in Princeton. I want to make two brief comments. So the first is about the, the DLI program. I have one son currently in the DLI program and hopefully I'll have two other children that'll sort of eventually get there when they're, when they're old enough. I think the DLI program is, is amazing. And I want to thank you for exploring sort of many options that maintain the DLI program. I've heard some things about the DLI program being limited and there being a lottery for students getting into DLI moving forward. That would be a, a big concern for me. I've heard that there are sort of only going to be two classrooms. While this year, the Ella, the kindergarten class has three classrooms. And so if we're expanding the number of students in the district or we're restricting the number of DLI classrooms, it seems like we're not making that opportunity available to everyone that really wants to, to have it. So I'd really encourage you to explore options that would allow sort of all of the students that want to do DLI to do DLI. So that's point number one. And then point number two is the, putting all of the construction and all of the students at Community Park, to me, it seems like it's making Community Park a second-class school, right? It's going to be 50% larger than the other schools. These are going to be the only students, they're going to be inconvenienced by this massive amount of construction that's going to be happening for at least two years. And so I would really encourage you to look at, how can we have this be something that's going to be more equitably spread across the whole community instead of this one particular school? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zach Leerhoff.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for letting us talk here. I'm a CP parent of a kindergartner. Zone for CP, it's our neighborhood school. I live on College Road as well. To me, a fifth and sixth grade school seems like the most elegant and fairest option for all the kids in the district. I understand it seems out of reach financially, but it would relieve pressure at all four elementary schools and the middle school at the same time, spreading that around and may provide social and developmental benefits to fifth and sixth graders besides, I'm glad the board will continue to scrutinize enrollment projections and cost estimates and see if there isn't a way to make a five and six school work. Earlier, it was mentioned that there are four other housing developments coming before the planning board in the near future. I'm wondering how long the various solutions on the table are projected to be sufficient to our needs and which of them might give the most latitude for future expansion? Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole Pezzold Hancock.
Hi, I live on Jefferson Road. And as a CP, as a parent of a CP student and also a resident of the CP neighborhood, I, I very much share the concerns of other parents that they brought tonight. But I'd like to talk about the middle school experience. When we first started talking about a five, six school, my son was in second grade and it seemed like a really great option for dealing with population growth that was projected then. And as he got into fifth grade, I was like, man, I really wish that we had been able to do that five, six school because I felt like he was bored. He wasn't being stimulated the way that, you know, you would want in a school that was really made for younger children. And then when he got thrown into sixth grade last year, I, I wished even more that he'd had that opportunity of a five, six school because I felt like it would have been a much easier transition for him going from boredom in elementary school his final year to suddenly having so many responsibilities and having that crazy schedule, which I understand is necessary in order to pack all of the students in at the middle school, but they are packed. And, and, you know, these elementary parents here, they, their minds would probably explode if they saw that schedule already because they, they have no idea yet. Anyway, but I, I know that building onto the middle school would help add physical space for the estimated 900-plus students that are expected there in a few years. But I am concerned that it won't help the district to fulfill its strategic plan goal of helping all students feel that they're connected to an adult at school. I worry that it won't be enough to help the kids who aren't superstars in academics or the arts or sports to explore and build strength in these areas with a mentor. I worry that, you know, the kids who don't qualify for services won't be seen as much and won't get that extra support when they occasionally need it. It might just enlarge that unseen middle at the school. And there are all kinds of anecdotes that I have about this, you know, from the side, the fact that we have two casts for the school play or that, you know, there were 250 kids on the track team, that's like third of the school last spring, and really only a very small portion of that were able to compete. And the rest of the team wasn't even able to train with them most of the, most of the week. They were just given recommendations for what they could do on their own time to train, which is not really being part of a track team. So there are awesome extracurriculars at PMS and awesome staff who I know want to know and support all of our kids. But as the school grows, a dwindling percentage of the student body is going to have access, that kind of access that I think we would prefer they all have to them. And so this is another reason why I do support exploring a five, six school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Violeta Medina Andres.
Hello, I am Violeta Medina Andres. I live in 232 Mount Lucas Road. After listening to the data presented, it is a bit unclear to me how the expected future enrollment in the middle school will be solved in the future. It seems that with this proposed supersized CP, it's only half of, of the solution that in the future, more construction will be needed. And overall, I, I don't think that neither the board nor the public have enough information to reach a conclusion on which is the best, most balanced solution at this moment. I really urge the board to please not to focus on an option yet until each of them has been complemented with all the externalities associated to them. There is not only US dollar, that is, there is also the concept of the true cost, considering everything and everything that cannot be put a value to it. I, I think right now there is really an opposed to origins comparison in that matrix. I believe you have done an excellent job gathering all that data, but one option has the hidden cost of demolishing Valley Road. The others, they don't have that. So overall, it's not the full picture. I, I would urge you to really complement that to be able to see what is the true cause of, of each solution. For example, the supersized CP option doesn't account for the loss of outdoor space for a CP neighborhood that will, that many families don't have usable outdoors space. They rely on CP. And also with the new families coming into it with part, like a, a bigger proportion of them will be affordable housing, that the average in, in Princeton, that will increase. I don't think it also aligns with the policy of distributing lower-income kids among the elementary schools. And my question is, are you reversing your policy on that matter output? And are you being okay with increasing the difference in demographics among elementary schools? I think the future students at this proposed supersized CP will have half the playground for double the amount of the student. And I would like to know how that will compare with the rest of the students in the elementary schools. And the principals talk about the sense of belongings. I think other people will talk with more authority on that, but I think it's, it's really difficult to belong to a 600-population school as opposed to a 300, 400. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristy Cole.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Cole. I live on Dodds Lane. I am in my eighth year as a Littlebrook parent. I just, I wanted to commend the Long-Term Planning Board. I think some of what you've come up with is sensible. I'm glad to see there was the Sister Model School proposed. And I will point out that, that families who are happy with waiting and taking this next part slow is because they may be happy with the status quo, they're not being squeezed. I think two of our schools right now are being squeezed. And so I just urge you, as you go back, to come to, you know, an affordable and quick solution. And I say affordable because whatever you come up with, it has to pass referendum. And I'd want to be standing here a year from now and we still don't have a solution and our schools are still being squeezed because it doesn't pass referendum. And I say quick because our students, at Littlebrook, we are already paying for the imbalances in this school. And we're losing our specials, we've lost Spanish, or we've losing our special spaces, I should say. We don't have a Spanish room. Our kids no longer have a music room. And so we're, we're looking at like, do we get art? What's next? And so I think we're, we just urge a quick decision. And we already have four sections at Littlebrook in third, fourth and fifth grade. So it's, when we say So it's, when we say mega school, I mean, we're already at Little Brook, that's, we're already experiencing that today. So we're talking, you know, three years from now, there's going to be more kids forecast, whatever demographics are showing, we know there's more kids. So I just urge an expeditious and affordable solution.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristy. Next up is Chris Reed.
I live at 317 Edgerstone. My kids attend CP, or my older two do, but they actually attend via bus. We actually moved to Princeton for a lot of reasons. One of the primary reasons was to move to a place that had reputation for excellent schools. And one of the things that really excited us was the DLI program, so much so that we, you know, regardless of where we, where we lived within Princeton, we wanted our kids to go there. And I think one of my concerns with the proposed, as it's been dubbed, sort of super monstrosity school, is the idea of having kind of two entirely different experiences within one school. I think many other people have spoken to a lot of the other issues in terms of size and space and all of that, but I think, I do not see how that can be helpful to the DLI program to have this, you know, the I stands for immersion. And I think that part of what makes a language immersion program work is the idea that it's interwoven with everything in a student's life there. And if there's this entire group, you know, a larger group cohort of students who are in the same building that you see, but you don't really interact with and who have no interaction with, with the dual-language program, that to me seems to undermine it and sort of speaks to sort of deprioritizing the entire project of DLI, which, you know, is, is difficult to think of. And I have another, a younger child who, you know, it concerns me, the idea that by the time my youngest enters the program, if under some of the sort of published proposals, I may have to see if she gets in and can even attend, you know, the same kind of education that the older two got. So thank you. I know that, you know, everyone is doing their best in considering a large amount of data and you're trying to balance the needs of a lot of different schools. But, you know, I think, you know, I ask you to consider everything that's been said tonight. And apologies for the confusion, I don't think I realized I was signing up to speak when I put my name down. But, you know.
You did a great job. Thank you. And the next, yep, the next person is Melissa Greenberg. You know, you don't have to speak, you can change your mind, just, I want you to know, it's not, you're not writing in blood. Okay.
Hi, thank you so much to everyone for being here. I want to especially applaud our high school board members. I think you did an excellent job, so thank you very much. I live at 14 Cameron Court. My kids are zoned for Little Brook, but we've opted into the CP dual-language immersion program and I'm very glad we had that opportunity. But I want to emphasize a different point. I spoke on Saturday, I think many of you have already heard, my priority as a psychologist is to look out for the mental health of the students in our district. That includes all students, not just students at any one particular location. And hearing the importance of belonging to the Princeton district was really moving to me tonight and I really hope that the board and everyone will keep that in consideration as you move forward with planning, with it in mind that larger schools do limit the sense of belonging, especially when there are discrepancies across the various elementary schools. I think that will inherently cause differences in student experience. The experience at a 400-student school will be different from the experience at a 600-student school. I know it doesn't necessarily sound like a huge difference, but that is a really substantial difference. I hope that we will take into consideration much of what Nicole said about the middle school and how important it is for children, kids to have access to extracurriculars, meaningful access to extracurriculars, where they really feel like they are a meaningful team player in whatever it is that they're pursuing. And I think that the five-six school option may create the best opportunity if you're working with smaller populations, not, not just in the elementary schools, but I think the middle school is a crucial, crucial place for us to be looking as well. And I hope that maybe we'll even hear from, you know, the, the students when we're thinking through these plans on what their experiences are in accessing some of those extracurriculars and other resources and how they feel in a smaller school versus a bigger school. So thank you so much. Again, thank you for your, your time and your work and congratulations, guys.
Thank you. And we have one more comment that was emailed to us. Mr. Bolden's going to read that. Then we're going to move on to the rest of our agenda. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, we have another public comment section.
Great, this is from, I better start the timer. Corinne Brennan, Corinne Brennan of Dodds Lane was unable to attend and asked us to read the comment. First, I would like to voice my support and appreciation of the hard work that went into recommending the long-term elementary school plan. Thank you for working towards a solution that benefits our entire community. Second, I attended Saturday's long-term planning session and was shocked to hear a CP parent suggest that if the BOE did not change their plan, CP parents would vote down next year's referendum. Please keep in mind that this referendum would allow CP to keep the DLI program and would expand slash renovate the building while the other three elementary schools would get no renovations. I am honestly confused as to how a parent can make such a statement and think it is okay, because it is not. I am also confused as to how CP parents can say that a traditional track will ruin their sense of community. The school's sense of community starts from the top down with the principal. It is also built from the bottom up with families showing compassion and kindness toward, towards others and the entire community at large. I am hopeful that the BOE will vote to pass this recommendation so additional planning can occur. I'm also hopeful that this one CP parent is not reflective of the entire CP community and that we can all work together, we can all work towards a mutually beneficial compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Okay. Moving on now to, I've got to reload my board docs. All right, next up is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying and the school assessment report. Then we have policies, the first and second reading. The one for second reading is a second reading of the student discipline code of conduct. Next, we're going to board committee highlights and we'll start with operations with Susan Cantor.
I'll be brief as this meeting has been quite lengthy. We met on October 4th at 8:00 AM. Unusually, we began in closed session as we were discussing potential contracts. Later, we will be, we talked about the 2022 referendum where we will be accepting one group of bids, but we will be rejecting another group of bids. And so we had that discussion in closed session. We then opened into, we then went into open session. We discussed a list of improvements that they have been making around the district so we could get some good positive news, including building controls, working on PS and G direct install projects, the middle school sign, which will be unveiled this month after many years. And then...
Thank you very much. I was always wondering what that school was.
Right. We then, of course, received an update from Sustainable Princeton and the main part of our conversation was an energy analysis discussion and how the, how Sustainable Princeton has been helping the districts and what they can do going forward to even help us more make really good decisions moving forward on sustainability. And as I said earlier, we then, a member of the public brought up how we can work towards having a reporting system perhaps in our buildings that they were talking about water waste, where faucets are left on and things like that, but exactly tying into what you guys were talking about. Our next meeting will be open to, it always begins open to the public. It'll be November 8th at 8:00 AM. We like to start bright and early in operations and I welcome you all to join.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Next up is personnel with Mara.
Hi, the Personnel Committee met 8:15 Thursday, October 12th. We discussed a variety of topics, including supporting our growing pre-K program and the school testing coordinator stipends, which we're going to vote on today. We are never opened, we are always closed, I'm sorry for that, but it is necessary with personnel. We also learned of the New Jersey Department of Education's decision to re-extend the daily limit that substitute teachers can work. They went back to 40 days from 20. And I was going to recognize Rebecca Gold, our interim assistant superintendent of HR, sadly, she's not with us tonight, for her work in successfully advocating to the New Jersey DOE for this critical correction. It's, we have a hard time finding staff and it was, it's really nice to get the subs for a little bit longer. The district also held a very successful drop-in job fair on October 11th and we filled three vacant positions. Our next meeting will be at 8:15 on Thursday, November 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Next up is Beth with the policy report.
Yeah, the policy met on the 13th of October and we went over a new policy update alert 231, which is why we have a very long list of first reads this week, this month. And those are still in review by some of our administrators, but we want to get through them because some of them are required by law. And we talked about the idea of coming to a class-size policy because we think it's going to be necessary in connection with planning and in connection with the, trying to deal with the next couple of years, how we get from here to there with the growth. And our next meeting is on the 10th of November at 8:15 and it is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And to Jean Durbin watching at home, Beth said it was going to be brief, so that's why we want to head with it. And next up is the Student Achievement Committee report with Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Thank you. Student Achievement Committee met on October 13th and it was a very speedy meeting. We had a presentation on extended school year and summer programming from Mickey Christofelli and we also talked about an anonymous reporting tool for bias incidents and discriminatory incidents that we are considering for the district. And the third topic on our agenda was the overnight wrestling trip. That is an annual event in Atlantic City. And we then adjourned to closed session. Our next meeting is on Friday, November 3rd, 2023, 11:30 AM, and it's open to the public.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, I'm going to go through the report, through the agenda pretty quickly now. I'll try to get us out of here by nine o'clock. All right. I know, I know, it's 10 o'clock, I'm going to go so fast, we're going to go backwards. All right. I know that. All right. Personnel, L1 appointments, L2 transfer reassignments, L3 personnel items, L4 six-period compensation, L5 substitute student placements, L6 leave of absence, L7 curriculum and instruction, L8 student services, L9 athletic appointments, L10 job descriptions. Then moving on to the curriculum and instruction, M1 educational consultant services, Princeton Family Institute, M2 student overnight trips, is that an action item? Can I get a motion, please? Beth second, Betsy? Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
We didn't have a chance to discuss this. I'm going to vote no. I think we should be paying closer attention to not only how much these school trips cost parents, but how much they cost the district. The nurse alone is $300 a night, so I'm going to vote no.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolden. M3 Language and Cultural Exchange Program, fiscal year '24. Then we're moving on to student services, special education, and one, educational placement of pupils, and two, fiscal year 2024 IDA grant carryover. Then moving on to the business, finance, plant, and transportation operations. O1, financial reports, O2, fire and evacuation drills, O3, registration travel agenda, O4, formal bid award roof replacement, O5, comprehensive maintenance plan, O6, rejection of bids for the roofs and HVC upgrades at multiple schools, 2022 referendum, O7, competitive contract award, 2324. So I just want to take a moment, we didn't discuss this, but we had an issue with our after-care provider and I really want to thank Valerie Ulrich, who worked very hard to engage parents and, and to find another vendor. And so we've decided to proceed with the YWCA of Princeton. So again, thank you very much, Valerie. Then we have O8, which is FVHD Architectural Group Contract Amendment, food service design. And then we have O9, which is FVHD Architectural Group Contract Design and Planning Services related to PPS long-term planning. And with that, we move on to our second public, we're almost there, Oliver, we're almost there. Good night. I just needed five minutes. Good night. We're moving on now to our second public comment. You can come and speak about any item. Yeah, go ahead. Just come up, just say your name and the street you live on, and if you could keep to three minutes.
I'll be the last.
All right, thanks.
Hi, my name's Leanna Johnkey and I live at 198 Linden, so right behind the middle school. This is my first board meeting.
They're usually not this long.
It's okay. I'm a CP parent and educator and actually moved here in May for the DLI program. I'm biased because I'm a dual-language teacher myself and I run a small school that you might know on Leav, Princeton Nursery School. I really came here thinking I would focus on the DLI program and the goals for CP, but honestly, I was struck and saddened by the data shared for Black and Brown students and the lack thereof for their achievement. And so I'm wondering if in the future planning, that can be taken into consideration, just to know that smaller schools can support students for communities like mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on now to the consent vote, can I get a motion, please? Mara, second. Rob? Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Just a reminder, tomorrow night, 7:00 on Zoom, the Zoom link is posted on the website, it is, and you'll get to deal, you'll get to speak with Mr. Bolden, Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Cantor. You're not there? All right, that's enough. But, and then the police chief will be there and the architects. And I really do like the new architect, he's very, very good. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Brian, second. Beth, all in favor? Okay, good night, everyone.